All right, folks. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, May the 27th at 6:00 PM. We'll officially call this board meeting to order to do our roll call today. Hi, Alex. Good to see you. Sorry, to do our roll call today, we'll start at this end.
Hey, Larson, Director District 5.
I'm Director of the District as a Superintendent.
I'm Karen Hoover, President of the District and Director of District 1.
Trust of District 3.
Kate Culler, Director District 2.
Alex Brewster, Senior Student.
Welcome to all of our guests joining us in person and online. There are so many of you, so glad that you all are here. I know we've got a lot of special things on the agenda this evening. Please, if you haven't already, make sure that you sign in. It's a really important part of our meeting requirements, so please do that. All right, we'll now move to our land acknowledgement. I don't kind of read that since we're approaching.
Yes, and I think he's supposed to be online.
Okay.
I'm checking to see if he's online yet.
Just a second.
No, not yet.
Okay. All right, so we in the Takuila School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn, and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duamish and Muckleshoot people, past and present, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duamish and Muckleshoot tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land, and we strive to work alongside the Duamish and Muckleshoot people who have been living and working here since time immemorial. So our labor acknowledgement. We further acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black country and its institutions. We remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. We also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United. As a school district leadership, we pledge to recognize and work against systems that have historically and currently enforced and create inequities among the people that we serve. So for those who would like, I'd like to invite you to stand as recently as possible. Your allegiance.
It's two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. It's all liberty and justice for all.
All right, so at the beginning of our meeting, we do like to share our Board of Directors agreements. These are things that we came together as a board and really doped into both our individual and our collective values as members of the board. So we commit in every space to honor transparency. I'm just gonna not read the subtext, but you can definitely do so. But to honor transparency, be courageous, lean into righteousness, curiosity, and then respect, centering the humanity of every individual here and those in attendance and those that we are in discussion about and around. Okay, so with that, we'll move, taking a motion to approve our agenda.
So.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, it is approved. All right, so first up, we have some amazing recognitions this evening, and for that, I'll pass it over to Dr. Pedrosa.
Yes, hi, everybody. And I'm gonna have Ms. Cardenas come up as well as some other folks. But I just wanted to share that we in Takuila School District have five schools, which are all of our schools being recognized for the state. We have a big award. Scott, can you hold it up, please? You guys, Liliana has it right here. So actually, Liliana, Ms. Cardenas was just at the state conference and that just passed out the state award, so take one of the. Yeah. Yeah, it's the Washington State Recycling Association. So I want to show everyone here. We'll put it out in front probably. But the reason why this is pretty significant, and I want to start with a little bit of information, just first of all, when I first got here, the first person I met was, I'm gonna call him out. At first, I'm gonna call it Joe Camacho, and I'm gonna call it the City of Takuila. We had some meetings to talk about how we bring recycling full throttle into Takuila School District. It took us a couple, it took us a year, but we got there. And what's amazing is when you think about it, so I've only been here now two years. Already, within two years, with the help of the City of Takuila, as well as our school and our school leaders, we are now a recipient of this award. A, because, I think about that in one year, right? And think about all the schools and their commitments to doing this. And what's pretty significant about Takuila School District getting this award, it's in three categories. It's in waste reduction, recycling collection, organic collection. And each of our five schools all is participating. We are the only district in the state as a whole district to receive this award. So I think that's pretty significant. So would you say that? For Takuila and also Liliana, so I'm gonna pass it to Liliana and invite our guests up to sort of share their components as well.
So I would like to do a little presentation. This presentation is about the Washington State Recycling Association. And we can move a little bit forward. So I just wanted to let you know what we did. So you're of course not there, who we are. We are a district of around 3,000 students and we have five schools. This is, and that information could be, as you know, we go yet. So what we did at schools, we launched recycling on compostable schools and cafeterias throughout the district. We use, and this is to the help of the city and Foster High School students who receive, we use reusable trays and utensils. At Foster High School, they got a grant, and we implemented also on the other schools. The launch also offered, we offered knock serve so that they, everybody has a tray and goes through, through the line. So what we did, we had, so what we did was, we could, with the help of the City of Takuila, because I believe that without the City of Takuila's help, we wouldn't be able to launch this program out. So we did put compost bins under the, in every single school. We worked with the custodians, with principals and individuals in the school to find out and have a process in place to see how it was the best way to direct students to how to compost and teach. So it was a kind of big deal. So, so this is myself and my partner in crime. And I recite about this, I recite about this, this program. We kind of coordinated together all the work through, with the City of Takuila throughout all the point of work. So we receive containers for that. This is containers for the food service department as they are starting to compost. Okay, so this is Ivan, as you know. So one of the biggest problems we had was having to deal with union representatives. As having a compost would be in for them, be extra work. So we tried to work together, and instead of being an extra work, it becomes a shift of work. So the hours were not added to their, to the workload. It was just shifted. So they, after several conversations, they agreed to move forward with the program. So now he's the biggest, the biggest, the important. So it's, yeah, awesome. So like I said, our partners are the City of Takuila, Colleen, Jen, Sam Wilder from the Environmental Group. We have Mayor, I'm sorry, and also King County Jose. I'm sorry. Jose Ochoa Erway. And I would say that this program was, this compost would not move forward without the help of all of them. From the, for King County to receive 5,000 hats and grant money, we receive all our bill, bill, bill of grateful bags, we receive all of our containers. And also, we receive some of the utensils that we use and some training tools. So what the City of Takuila did, the students, they came over at the beginning of the program, almost every lunchtime, to work with the students, to work with the staff, and to work with principals in place. So they gave, they gave us the signs, making sure that everything was, that process was working very well. So on a big basis, we have, that I said, the City of Takuila was there to do the student training, to do the collection of stations, and also to monitor them. Yeah, so there's always. The, well, the only ways that we had in economy would be the milk carton, which has to be disposed in the garbage. And with that, we are now working with zero waste. It's a company that approached me during the conference, which may, we may be able to work with the food service department to see if we can change so to have now zero, no zero compost on recycle. So what we did was, we saved so much in garbage this year just for the compost, that we had actually almost six school buses full of, full of, full of garbage that were not, did not go into the, into the garbage, into the garbage. So, so thank you. So now, why are we here right now? Because like Dr. Pedrosa said, we are the only district, Takuila School District, the only one in King County that has to save this award. For all the work that they did. So I will actually have to say thank you for the students, to the students, to the staff members, and to the community that helped, the City of Takuila that helped with this program. Mom, I want to do more. Oh. Oh, oh. Right, that's me receiving that we're working behalf of the Takuila District. That was the, the meeting was like only last week. It was an incredible, incredible conference. All these people here to save the land and to compost and to recycle. All right. Thank you. Yeah, so at this moment, I would like to bring the City of Takuila.
And you can pull up a chair if you'd like. And thank you for being here.
Thank you. So just wanted to say a couple of words. Mine's calling minion, I'm a solid waste analyst with the City of Takuila. I basically deal with anything that has to do with garbage and recycling and composting. I've been working closely with Liliana and others to help provide assistance and encouragement throughout this project. As you can saw, I did attend also the Washington State Recycling Association Conference, where the school district was recognized. And what I have to say about that, like kind of anecdotally, is that once the award was presented, there were so many people that came up to like Liliana, you know, just congratulating the school district and thanking you all for being such an inspiration for the rest of the state. I think oftentimes, there are schools that make it like look really easy and Liliana like says like the good and the bad, and this is what we struggle with, this is how we overcame it. And so it really gave a good opportunity for people to say, hey, we could do this too. So, want to congratulate all of you, and I'd like to pass it to Mayor McCloud.
Thank you, and good evening to the Takuila School Board, to the district staff, and to the school principals. So just a few words from the mayor's office, from the City of Takuila, that we are very excited to be here today to recognize the fantastic efforts made this year towards reducing waste, recycling, and composting. I know that achieving these kinds of results takes a team, and I understand that that team consists of custodians, principals, kitchen staff, and lunch staff that were key in the success of this program. So we just want to again say, great work, this is really quite the accomplishment. I also know the students learned how to sort quickly and took on this new program of positivity and enthusiasm. And because of your efforts, we know that you will be able to cut costs for waste disposal, reduce use of resources, turn food scraps into soil, and recyclables into new products. So I'm especially impressed by the quantity of waste being kept out of the landfill as a result of reusing utensils and trays, composting, and recycling. As was mentioned in the presentation, the same amount is filling six school buses a year. That's very, very impressive. So from the City of Takuila, we just want to say congratulations. Great job on keeping Takuila green, and great work, everyone.
Hello. First, I want to say thank you for having me, so it's an honor. My name is Marcelo Choa, I'm the King County Green Schools Program, Program Manager. I just want to echo what everyone has said about the achievement of the Takuila School District. But just a little bit about the Green Schools Program. We've been around for about 30 years. And in that time, we've made a lot, a whole lot of progress across schools and districts around King County. But this is one of the rare moments when a whole school district is able to achieve recognition like this. And I want to say, as part of King County, you know, it's been a privilege and an honor, an honor to work with Takuila Schools. Because as the mayor said, like kids took on this effort really quickly. To the, to the kind of like rate of, like rate of recycling is just under 50%, which is really great. I can't stress that enough, it's a really big achievement. And under our Green Schools Program, if schools meet a certain threshold, we are happy to recognize them for all the hard work that they put in. And so today, I want to recognize five schools, and two good principals are here. And if Sam, you can help me, you know, pass out some banners, which will be displayed at the schools. And each year, you know, the recognition can get renewed. So we're hoping this is consistent, and again, with the help of school staff admin, we can have successful sustainability in continuation. So thank you.
Can we welcome the principals up to receive your banner? Just to add, because recycling is so important, the milk carts do get recycled. I know you were a little nervous. So just do know that the milk carts are required for recycling, and it's more than, I guess the principals were probably all like, we're putting them.
Joe, come on, you're representing Foster High School. I mean, like I said, you were the one that was started this. So come on, up here, yeah.
And one, to point out too, Joe is the reason that compostable utensils are being highlighted at Foster, and, and.
Well, it was students, actually. So Jose, who graduated last year, and then Marilyn, who's a junior this year, they kind of had the idea as to change how we did, how we handle garbage at Foster.
If I had to ask, the principals stand here, so we'll take a picture with the board after you each get your banners, but yours can't make you. And Joe Foster. And then Foster.
Does the picture, stand up, board, stand up. We need the picture.
One more, and then I'll take a couple quick pics. I'll take a couple on this, a couple on south, and you'll feel like paparazzi. Ready, one, two, three, go green. Go green. And you'll see each of yours have the three badges, because you fill three categories. I'm gonna take one from this angle too. This is, this is a rare moment, we'll never have again. Am I looking this way? The one makes sure you're. Perfect, yes, a little bit more, yeah, there we go, perfect. Ready, one, two, three. And then I'm just gonna do a cell on. This would be hard to duplicate. Last one, I know, I know. All right, ready, one, two, three. Awesome, congratulations.
Congratulations, school.
Thank you.
Nice work.
Now, Michael, you have two.
You know, you're mine now. Oh, my, thank you. So the good news is, is the recognition is not yet complete.
I have one more.
Moving on to us.
Yeah. I have one more. I want to have Director Naomi Firdo to come up, please. If you want to come up, Naomi had to say. Just walked out, that's okay. So can I please, okay, first, I want to share a few things. Last, Friday, June 16th, the Pudaham ESD held their annual awards event for the Washington Association School Administrators Region. Takuila School District honored for our Takuila Children's Foundation for the Community Service Award. And as you know, Takuila Children's Foundation has enriched our schools with the chance to offer staff and scholars throughout the years. We additionally honored, and he couldn't be there, but we're gonna honor him tonight, Takuila School District also honored Alex Brewster for the Student Leadership Award. Alex was awarded due to his work with the launch of the Superintendent Student Advisory Board, where Alex, along with Dennis Quinn, asked our team to be co-facilitators for the group. They developed and co-created the structures and agendas to ensure that students felt safe in the meetings. They also led last year in developing our district's anti-racist statement. Alex is a running start student, has a job, got into the University of Washington for the fall. While serving as a student board director and a member of the Gates Education Roundtable Group alongside me and your fellow directors, student directors sitting right next to you. Alex, we are just so proud of you, and we honor you. You have just made Takuila School District a better space for students and student voice, and I just want to thank you so much for the sincerity of my heart. We're just so glad that we've honored you. And here is your certificate from the Integritate Program in the Washington Group. There we go.
Congratulations. All right. Great, congratulations, Alex, and to our whole district, and specifically to our amazing school leaders for all of your hard work and dedication to make all of that possible. So thank you. All right, so we'll now move to our public comments opportunity on the agenda. It looks like there's no one signed up in person for public comments. Don't worry, you don't need to be shy, you can just look out, no worries. All good. Thank you for being here. If there's anyone that joining us online that would like to offer a public comment, you can indicate that by raising your hand or typing your name in the chat. So we'll give you just a minute to find either of those things. Thank you. Nothing in the chat? Who's having the reference factors on? Great.
Yay, Alex.
Yay. And then that, note in the chat is, no. Okay, great, just so congratulations, Alex. Okay, so seeing no public comments, we'll go ahead and move on. As a reminder, there's opportunity at the end to provide an additional comment. So we'll now move to our report section of the agenda, beginning with our student representatives. If you want to go in any order you'd like.
I also have my computer set up. Okay, well, let me start. So I co-led a student advisory board with my student rep partner Alex, where we spoke to students from elementary schools to high schools in the Takuila District about the social and emotional wellbeing of the students in their school. We brainstormed programs and other ideas we believe should be added to our schools. Like Takuila District, you know, racism policy, we wanted to make one for our new program. I can't remember what it's called right now, but we wanted to do that so that people could feel more safe with asking help about like their problems, either like at home that they're dealing with, that they don't feel like they have anyone to talk to. So we wanted to make that, and also, we talked to Naomi about like doing a, like a flyer in the bathroom stall, so when people are in there, they can see that the number is just up there for people to contact, or if they need someone to talk to. And we also came up with the idea to present our ideas about like, in general, with everyone who came to the student advisory board meeting at the end of the year celebration.
That sounds bad.
Both of you, okay, cool.
I'm still, I haven't shown me that board box.
Adrian, we can come back to you when you're ready.
Do you have anything else? If you don't have mine. Okay. Well, I'll just, I'll, I'll.
That's right, we can come back to whatever you want to do.
Oh, okay. Give me, yeah.
Yeah, sure, we'll, we'll go on, and we'll, we'll pop back over. Okay, so now our superintendent report.
Sure, just, there's just so many things going on at the end of the month. As you, I always say that this is the busiest time for us as a district because we're planning for the end of school, we're planning for summer school, and we're planning to fall. So this is a huge, busy time for all of us. But first of all, I just want to really honor our retirees that are coming through. We had a celebration a couple weeks ago, on May 15th, where we had an all-staff celebration to honor all the folks that have decided to retire well deserved, well earned. And we just want to thank them so much for their, their service. I also want to thank the volunteers who helped set up, who helped got things going, who helped get us gifts and raffles, and are also our food service director who supported us with catering, and then all the community members in the Takuila community that donated items for the raffles for staff. So just thank you to all of you. I just had a couple updates, I did my little recognition earlier. Just congratulations to our truck and field team. They'll be heading to Austin. We had a great sports year. Oh, my God, all of our sports, athletics, it's been like, woo, woo, every month, every quarter. It's been great, thank you for all the hard work you've done. I also want to say the principal's left, but I just want to announce that we had a big honor also. So Thornback Elementary also has another banner, because they actually were named for the state of Washington as a high-growth school for the state with targeted growth and closing achievement gaps. So they have a beautiful banner to share. It's pretty significant, because only 16% of all of the schools in the state of Washington received that award, so that's exciting. And then the second thing I want to also announce that actually, Takuila Elementary School is also can be, also has a large number of growth over the last two years, and they're heading out of school improvement. So they will be not in school improvement next year. So I think that also. As a reminder to the community, tomorrow night is our Foster High School Senior Awards Event at the PAC at 6:00 PM. Thursday night is our Thornbacks Multicultural Night at 5:00 PM. And we'll, we'll have some of these on the website. And then Friday, June 6th, Foster High School graduation. If you needed tickets, or families of you haven't graduated. If you needed tickets, if families of you haven't graduated or a senior, you need a ticket to the graduation. It's going to be at the Showers Center in Kent, it starts at 6:00 PM. Please get there early, traffic and parking is challenging sometimes. And then just to let everyone know, we have a budget advisory committee this year, meet several times over the year. Part of our commitment to engagement on Thursday, June 12th. It's going to be on Zoom. We're going to have a budget meeting for any family, student, or community member, or staff member who wants to come. Our CFO, Amy Fleming, will do a short presentation about the outcome of the advisory group where we are with the budget. And then we will also be listening and getting feedback from staff and students and families around that process. And that's all I have. It's a lot, but it's a short speech.
Questions, comments?
Sure, yeah. Okay, so I wasn't at the last SSI meeting because I was at Tech Week for the Addams Family Usual, otherwise known as Hell. Tech Week is Hell. You know, being at school until 8 o'clock every day, it does something to you. But the, some celebrations I'd like to mention since I like, I like that we're all celebrating so many things. The Addams Family Usual did really, really well. We made, I think, $2,150 for ticket sales. And then the choir concert happened last week on Thursday, it was amazing. And then this Thursday will be the band's final concert as well. Please go see it, our band is amazing as well. All of the arts at Foster are so great. In other things related, I've been signed up to go speak with Mr. Larson at the Wassa Conference. And I am dying for once. I have no other things to report.
Just out of curiosity, the ticket revenue from sales, because of the way it's structured this year, does that go right back into your budget for next year? That's great. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move to our director reports. This end, then we can go right from yours to the legislative. So Director Coler.
Yeah, I too attended the all-staff appreciation. I always feel like it's an opportunity to immerse ourselves with faculty and staff and just, you know, celebrate all the great work they do. We don't get that opportunity in the same form in any other way. And so I just appreciate the welcoming that everyone else creates for us while we're there at the event as well. What an exciting time to see so many people, everywhere from five years up to, yeah, I think it was 35, I suppose, 40, the top. Those are really incredible amounts of careers there. So plus folks retiring is really impressive. I also attended, is it Wassa? It's the Washington Association of School Administrators. It was a regional awards event. And I don't know if you actually said, you received superintendent award, but that's worth a lot of appreciation.
It was a part of merit, yes, thank you.
Very, very, very cool.
Thank you.
And then I attended there in two capacities, I do a lot of things in the community, but I attended as a director. But I also attended as president of Taquilla Children's Foundation, which also this school district nominated for our community organization award, which we were over the moon. It was just really exciting that that kind of helped, we, we, recognition and acknowledgement. And it just makes us hungrier to do more for this great district. Then this very day, I attended the Garden Band opening. I'm starting, I used to say I would even be with us in the community, but I'm starting to feel like Choc Macho is. What a great gathering, the place has really changed a lot. And if you haven't been down there, wandered down there to see the matching amphitheater and all the things that the students have done, the ideas that they've had, and the teachers and, you know, the robotics teacher. Try not to say Quiznos, Quiz, parts, the cuisine arts teacher, as well as the ecology environmental teacher have a lot of cross-intersectionality frankly on on what you can do and collaborations between what's coming from the earth and what you can do for food. You kind of wondered about the robotics, they, the kids designed a picnic table and I think they have the most tools and the safety moves and glasses and helped them get that together. It's just very impressive, there's, you need quite a significant change. And that's only, only like a phase one, right? A four phases of a plan that was paid for through grants, so it's really impressive. And then I wanted to comment, I'm just kind of on the coattails of Dave who went down to city council and said, hey, Cascade, you just not doing so well in the traffic piece. And I don't know if you know, but all my neighbors, I walk my dogs and neighbors, all of my neighbors are talking. They're real happy that city police have seen fit in the mornings. For sure, I don't turn the answers, but they were all following me that in the morning, we have police patrol. Stand by, the traffic is significantly improved, so.
Makes a difference.
It's huge, so I went down Monday night to make the same comments in city council. So when you got neighbors and that's top of mind, when you're walking your dog, that's a pretty important change. And then last of all, for the senior night, I will be appearing as a director, but also representing with Rotary. Former Mayor Eckberg will be there and we're going to provide some scholarships from Rotary, so looking forward to tomorrow night. That's, I think, pretty difficult in a short period of time.
Nothing to report.
Well, we were at most of the same events this month, so I thought that was mostly what I was going to talk about, just the Wassa luncheon. Again, recognizing Taquilla Children's Foundation, of course, our student ref, Alex Brewster, and then Dr. Brjos, who was too modest to share that she won that award for merit. And I also just want to thank the team who nominated her. I, you know, the things that Director, you have been able to do in the short amount of time that you've been in the district is just, is quite remarkable. And I'm really grateful that you are here and look forward to what you will continue, the direction you'll continue to take us as our superintendent.
Thank you.
Also attended staff appreciation, it was a little bittersweet for me, it was my last staff appreciation to attend. But it was a really lovely event and I'm just so grateful for the, particularly for the food service team who gives up their staff appreciation to, to serve everyone there. And then also just want to give a little shout out, the line was backed up, Dr. Brjos ran back there, put some gloves on and started serving and helping Jenny to do that. So just again, huge shout out to our food service team that night, wouldn't be successful without them. And the food is also great. And then I had the opportunity to go down to Olympia, and I don't remember the bill, but watch the signing of the bill that really supported the Taquilla Promise. We were alongside the Renton School District as well. And so that was an experience, I've never done anything like that, it was super fun to be able to be there, I got a pen, very neat. Yeah. And then just the two, two quick reminders about some upcoming things that Dr. Brjos forgot to mention. We have a CTE STEM event that's happening at Foster High School on Thursday at 4:30 PM. They put so much effort and work into this event, so please stop by. And then also speaking of the Taquilla Promise, tomorrow is kind of the culmination of all of our efforts and the ribbon cutting, so to speak, of the Taquilla Promise, and that's tomorrow, Foster High School at 4:00 PM. So please definitely stop by either one of those events if you can.
So I'll start off with the Addams Family, it was, I was, it was impressive, the drama group has kind of stretched themselves in ways that they hadn't been stretched before. The show is, you know, had set properties that don't, you know, the faces are dropping down from the top and blowing up, which I had not seen done in our stage for quite enough years, so. And then the, the costuming and, you know, Aiden was, I don't know how long it took her to put on all that makeup, but he was special with all, with the whole makeup on and the, you know, just the challenges in terms of, they did a lot of duet singing, which is not easy when you're, I mean, that's just a way to stretch yourself, stretch them. And it was just, yeah, it was, it was great to see them, you know, pushing all the, all the limits of things that they had not necessarily done before. And they pulled it off really well, so hopefully we can continue to get some improvement into the Performing Arts Center. I actually went, I went up to see what was happening in some of the schools kind of around us, I went to a couple of shows and they, you know, there's, the Performing Arts Center, you know, in terms of sound lighting and things that we're working on, we're, you know, quite a bit better. So it'll be interesting to see when we kind of upgrade the whole system and, you know, the students will, I'm sure, you know, upgrade the even the quality of the show. So anyways, it's a very impressive effort and we'll see what they're doing, what's something about for the, for the fall when they decide, I don't know, they decided.
Yeah, they can decide.
Okay, but you don't want to say that?
I can. We're going to be doing Hattie's Town. And it's going to be even bigger than Addams, it really is, it's going to be really cool.
It's interesting that they picked out because I've been, Seattle schools are doing Hattie's Town everywhere.
Yeah.
This year, I saw it at Franklin, they're doing it at Roosevelt, they're doing it at Ballard. So that's, that's even more ambitious show than Addams Family, so.
Yeah.
So you'll be pushing the limits, it's, it's a very topical show because of the kind of social, I mean, it's about making deals with the devil and pushing down people that don't have the advantages, which massively relevant to today's, I mean, I think that's probably one of the reasons Seattle was doing it all over the place. And so it's a great show for a lot of adults to see and make some interesting commentary on our social dilemma here, so anyway. Let's see, I was at the staff appreciation, I also went to the, so the School Directors Association have their, I'm on their legislative committee and we reviewed all the proposals that came in and both of the ones that we proposed around adding equity into the funding system and not shifting the apportionment. Came in times, those were passed with, or those will go on to the general assembly when they do pass recommendation. I think they'll, pretty safe to pass. The good news about the apportionment shift is the bill that was going to shift it and make it worse did not pass. So enough schools screamed and yelled about that one, but it's still backloaded heavily and we still need to get it more equal across the board. And the bill signing for Taquilla Promise, yeah, that was an interesting event. That was, so that was a bill that was introduced by our representative Steve Berquist and it's, I also was at the Foster Family Night where they had a kind of introduction of the Taquilla Promise to students and it was great highlighting colleges, which is the college associated with it, they're, they're all over it. And though they were, there was support and they're giving, the nice thing about the program, more than just paying the tuition, but it's also, they have cohort support for it, so you, you know, they're not just throwing this into the mix, there's support. And I know we found in the past, a long time ago, we used to have really good Gates scholarships, that was one of the things that made it really successful was the support that goes along with the tuition. And so that's going to be a really great program for, for all our students, it sounds like it's rolling out really well. So just to add to the, you know, the award that our superintendent got, just to kind of, a little bit, it's it's for the Wassa, I guess, ESD region, which is King and Pierce County, so it's all the superintendents, and that which is a lot of superintendents. And it was a lot, I think, for the social justice work that's been going on, you know, she's been leading it and a lot of the students and everybody's been involved in it. But so it's, as all these things are, they always give individual awards, but it's really about a lot of people working together. I wish they would do more, you know, in a group awards, but anyway, congratulations on that. And it's a, you know, it's, should reflect well on a lot of people that did the work that's going on in the district, so. That's it.
And Director Proctor, anything from you online?
Definitely, definitely. Regrettably, I wasn't able to join for the staff appreciation, we were out of the country, but I definitely want to acknowledge the great work and the retirees, my dear friend Robin Alsop over at Taquilla and my buddy Brett Christopher want to celebrate all their, and express my gratitude for all their hard work. Had a wonderful opportunity on Friday, the 23rd, to participate with Ms. Herda and the Avot over at Show Walter. About a dozen of us got to sit in at the, kind of a career day and small group session with about 60 of the Avot student, had a wonderful time just helping, talking, they wanted to hear about our careers, but words of wisdom as they transition from middle school to high school and pursue goals, it was a wonderful time. And looking forward to the end of the year celebrations with the transitioning students, but also the graduates, thank you.
Alright, and our second clues are reports.
Okay, yeah, actually, the list made it separate, and actually, all the concerts are related, but I'm just going to say that we have a couple of presentations, so I'll just roll forward into that.
Alright, so if we could get a motion to approve our consent agenda. Alright, so next up we've got just two items for board discussion and review. These are just kind of two standing things on our meeting, more in case there's anything relevant that we need to discuss. So the first is the board business document. For those of you that are maybe just joining us for the first time, are not sure, this is kind of a ongoing document that's ever evolving, where we are adding tasks or items that maybe come up in a board meeting that can't be addressed at that time, but that we want to ensure is added to a later agenda. So just kind of want to leave a little space, if there's anything that either is not on here that we need to make sure is added, or if folks have some questions about the status of any of these items. And also just a quick appreciation for Deb for keeping this nice and up to date, really detailed in the notes about where things are, so.
So we talked about the CD traffic and then thank you for going down and doing that. What's the, did they give any idea about the long term, or, you know, anything, or?
No.
We just had them here too, I was like, wondering.
Kate mentioned, and Superintendent Brjos got together with the chief, so they've introduced, you know, some police presence up there various times, which sounds like is just being very helpful, that's the feedback we got from the school as well. So now that's, that's a, that's not the complete solution. I mean, I think what I'd like to see is, there's a, there's an effort that the city council has around traffic calming. So that could be, you know, bumps, it could be lights, it could be, I mean, any kind of facilities up there. And that's, that's, they have not committed to doing that, it's on the list. The approval list that doesn't seem to improve much, but waiting for money. So that's one, I think what we need to just constantly keep bringing it up. But, but it sounds like the first step, the kind of easy thing, it has been done, so it's, it sounds like it's considerably better, but you know, we still want a little more.
Yeah, what we did was, we met with Chief Trevor and one of the things we asked is if we could, because we do have school resource officers, which are actually Taquilla's Police Department members and staff. And so we asked our principals and our SROs if they can't be, it can't be regulated, if they have other duties to the middle and the high school, but if they had time to do spot checks and specifically around the time should drop off and after school pickup. So that's what they're doing and so they're coordinating some of that, so that's part of the plan. But it is, it's not a long-term solution. And I think, I know that Chief Whitbeck is actually part of the team that works on those pieces, but you would agree that we're on the list, but it's like, like what Dr. Larson stated, it's relative based on other projects that they have also. It's on the list, but it's not necessarily on the top of the list, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's something that we have to sort of, I think, continue to have a dialogue with, and I'm actually curious. I will be activated or coming up in the, probably the next two weeks or something, and that's actually in my agenda items to talk about with the statuses on that, or what do you think is moving forward with that?
And we still have, joining me in the city council list, I'm a little bit, hopefully I'll have one for that.
Yeah, and I was actually kind of just looking at the notes from that and and I wonder, it looks like kind of the work around that has been to schedule a meeting. I I wonder if we can kind of broaden that discussion a little bit for like, what will it look like to schedule out four quarterly meetings for next year? That way, when we get ready to approve our meeting calendar, those can be included. I think Saturdays are fine. I think I just wanna honor the fact that like, the board wouldn't be asked to do two Saturdays in a single month. So as long as they're spread out, that would be great. But I think that would be helpful as we think about planning this year.
I think it'd be nice also, if looking at the budget also for the C, since we're in the discussion, it looks like it was April twenty second. Kind of did it. I wonder what, if any, we can come up with solutions here. I'd like to kind of, I'd love to spend some time that maybe at a later meeting and talk about what or something the school districts can do. To also, if it's not gonna get pushed on the Tukula side, the city of Tukula, what are some things that we can do here at the school? And then looking at what resources that we may have or have to prioritize in doing that. I just remember there was a few scares this last year and I I fear that that will, could happen again. It could be worse. And so I wanna be sure that we're.
Yeah.
We're prioritizing it to us, even though it may not be a priority to the city as of yet. So if we could make, put that on a future more meeting would be great.
And one of the things I would encourage, it it just as a suggestion, so I've gone out and done duty, right? I've done the morning duty, just to kind of see for myself, is it is is enlightening, right? To watch, because some of it is the signage, but some of it is actually adult behavior, right? So it's a mix of both. So it's adult behavior, it's signage, and it's actually, I think, I think consistency, right? Consistency in terms of supervision. So I think there's a, it's not just one thing, it's many things. But I will say, yes, we we have a plan that we look at in terms of signage and things like that. But I will say, from my experience, having done, I think I've done three or four duties already this year up there in the morning. Um there needs, when I compare at Thorndike and when I compare at Tukula Elementary School, there has to be stop signs there. I mean, there has to be even like, like it's very, when I'm coming down here to come to Foster, I should could ask the audience, how many of you have gotten a ticket? Speeding up on the one, you know, forty-four. I know, I know, but I think just a little one. I think I was overweight three miles. But I think, well, it's funny, I'll never, it's never happened again, right? And so I just think, right? And I wonder, right? So I just think it's important, you know, the school zone, it's flashing and it's very clear. And it's it's not as clear around Cascade View. What's clear here for Foster and Showalter, it is not as clear around Cascade View. There should be stop signs in certain places. There needs to be, I think there are some speed laws, but not on the main street. And I think there needs to be some better signage or alerts for families. And then I think then the adult behavior part, we can also address as well. So I think it's a combination of a lot of things. And I, and what I would love is make me, we've even thought about inviting city council to come out, spend the day there, just observing. And I think you just just see it for yourself, because then you'll notice all those those things. And so I just wanna say that, but I think also consistency for us and all those pieces. I could tell a little girl today, she was on her scooter and she, right in front, she just, her dad was walking right by her. And she just went zoom right in front. Luckily the bus was stopped, but I kept thinking, if the bus was going, oh my goodness, right? So I stopped her, walked her, I had to educate her on what to do. And the dad's like, sorry, sorry, sorry. But, you know, parents are in a hurry, all of those things. So we just gotta, we have to work all together. We have to work together. Yeah, it's a lot of things.
Anything else here on this document? All right, next we got just a kind of a check in on board goals. We are, and we've made some good progress on the financial accountability goal for fiscal oversight, excuse me. Particularly related to the policy. We're gonna have another look at that or look at that today. Um I know that there's one that I've been a little negligent on, so I wanted to just name that, which is around the quarterly civics classes. Um so the hope was is that we would develop a cadence around that that was a little bit more consistent, rather than just kind of the once a year that we're asked to come in. Um I still commit to doing that and I will get an email out to the civics teachers so that we can get those on the calendar for next school year. Kind of as a part of our continued intention around finding more opportunities for us as a school board to go where folks are. Whether that's in the classroom or in the community. I know there's an update around my town hall as well, to be able to share about that.
Uh just basically conflicted with the same dates and so then I said yes and went to, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, that the date has been changed to January eighteenth, which is the day after the last school. Um it will be virtual only and it has been posted and marketed out. So we invite for everyone to join. It reflects on the school year as well as identifying our hopes for next week.
She knew that was, by the way.
Yeah, thank you for for navigating around us and helping us work through that conflict. Any other kind of just thoughts, input, status questions around where we're with our goals here?
So they under actually changed policy six oh two-two. That's, that's actually, there's a proposal in our materials for this meeting to actually do that. So it probably, I don't know, they don't say ongoing. I mean, this is actively being worked, so I don't know, put all the note in there.
That was where I was going to go straight over here, because it is on there and that I thought we had.
We just didn't try to get filled out with that date. Cool, we'll make those updates to that document. Great. All right, I just wanna name two about the goals. The first year, definitely, since I've been on the board, that we created board specific goals. Um so I thought that was a great step and hopefully that's something that we can continue as we move forward. All right, so next we are jumping to our presentation to talk all about the budgets.
Good evening, everybody. Amy, coming CFO. So I'm presenting tonight just a really high level budget update. Uh partially because OSPI, well, partially it was a long session. So the legislature ended the session at the end of April and they've made a number of changes. And so all of the state systems that we use for our budget purposes, one of the main drivers is a revenue component. Um is not yet available. So I am still running off of really rough estimates. Also, OSPI has not come out with all of their updates based on those numerous changes that we've seen come through. As a result of the legislative session. So this budget at this point is still a little bit high level. Uh so as we start through the next pages, I'm not going to dwell. Um but obviously our anti-racist goals, our statutes of plan, our own legislative incentive. And so first, I just wanted to bring up a reminder as far as what we did back in February for our board priorities. Um I'm not going to dwell on these slides, but this is something that we discussed at the February board meeting. And it's part of the reason why we had to do this was because we're still in binding conditions with OSPI. And so they wanted us to make sure that we were addressing our board priorities and reflecting ours. And so I just wanted to make sure that they were present in this presentation. I'm not gonna go through those. The next section is the Budget Advisory Committee. So we did form a Budget Advisory Committee. There were members from obviously the school board, student-led representation. Uh we also have parents and staff attend and be a part of this committee. Uh and so what we did was we focused on and provided a lot of input and information. It was a lot of information, providing them basically a budget one-on-one. So over them and instructed about how the state does their budgeting. And then how that translates to school districts and how the school districts are funded and then how we propel our budgets. So as we worked on that, then it was working through the processes for this upcoming school year. And what was truly important to the community. And so we went through a number of exercises. Looking at specific areas of what is important and then trying to prioritize those, which is really, really hard to do. And then at the end of the the committee meetings, they set forth and developed a number of items. For the superintendent to consider as we are developing the budget for the twenty-five twenty-six school year.
About how many people were in attendance at those meetings?
Twelve people.
My that was compared to previous years. I know that was something we're hoping to.
Uh similar, there's, there's still, we still have the issue. I mean, I think there was one parent. One, sometimes two students were there and so the rest of the staff. And so I think there's, we still have some work to do to figure out how to, I mean, it's the ongoing problem. Expecting people to show up at, you know, three o'clock in the boardroom, blah, blah, blah. There's other ways. Uh I mean, I shared with our CFO a survey thing that Evans was doing that could go out, go wider. So not necessarily expecting everybody to show up. Need to get a little more creative in how we're thinking, but anyway, so, yeah. And doing priorities is, I say, that's particularly difficult, you know, when we're massively underfunded to begin with. A diesel process, you know, I mean, a lot of these cuts, I mean, nobody was to make them, but.
Yeah.
The numbers.
Like what are your priorities?
So at the end, on page ten of the presentation. The following recommendations were provided by the committee. And I think these are kind of the front and center of things that we've already talked about. And so safety and security, the class sizes, we know that class sizes have been pretty large this year. And so, you know, class sizes are important. We're making sure that they're at a, a good number. And so they indicated at least to the bargaining level agreement. So maybe not quite at the state, but at least to a bargaining level. Um maintaining those class sizes. Maintaining those opportunities and resources for our scholars, especially in the area of sports, music and arts. Um that was very important. Multi-level staffing to reflect on the students. Adequate behavior supports and then any cuts that we're making to make them as far away from students as possible. And last but not least, effective communication.
About what does that mean?
We had a long conversation about that, but just making sure that we're providing information in a timely manner. And communicating out to all levels. So, you know, our staff, it leads to involve students to our students. And then also to our families. I think that was very important. Director Larson, do you have anything to add?
Well, I just ties it into the parent, one of the parent advisory goals is to celebrate or communicate what's going on. The whole, the whole ball of wax of communication.
Yeah, okay. Quick comment, we got the advisory board, doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of community there. Is there a possibility we should do a survey from at least parents? I know we got a couple of one-off people who are very serious about how they feel they don't get communicated with. I know I'm approached by the parents at odd all the times, which are usually right before school starts. Not feeling like, you know, when enrollment is or that they know what they're supposed to send, what supplies they're supposed to send their kids to school with. And then they find out the situation may be different coming from the teacher, things like that. Those are little signs, they're like little canaries in the mine, they're not major. But it tells me that if asked, maybe parents would just like say, yeah, I could use this information by X. And then we start to get zero in on it maybe. It also could be, they just don't know where to look. Because I think, I actually think this is one of the most highly communicative districts compared to many that I've been around. Um so I I compliment it often, but I wonder how we fall through the cracks. Have we ever done a survey of parents or do PTOs or anything?
We've done a survey in the past. That's something we're talking about for the coming years. And what we're learning, the past surveys we use, which is coming up with the conversation for the vote is. How do we do shorter surveys and more bulk surveys versus like massive, like a hundred question series? So we're trying to get more, I guess, creative than that. And so that's an opportunity with this new communication provider, survey. And it's also in a hundred languages, so people who don't speak English can respond. That's a hundred languages, I believe, which is good for us. So, so we're exploring another option, which is gonna be voted on later today to explore all of those things. Because they do quick faults, they do very, a variety of things. So we're, we're just gonna try it first for our first year. But of course, the board has to vote if that's the direction you want. So I have that as a presentation.
Better than I even thought we were working on.
Yeah. And I think what we can do to Director Coolers, I know we get a presentation around communication. At at some point, we could find like how to, or we could add like some information about the communication strategy, particularly like outreach around how we get feedback about our communication.
Because even as we get upon, I think the public gets involved as well.
Yeah, totally.
Uh the budget development timeline, so as you know, we must have a past budget by August thirty-first. Uh if we do not have a budget to the states, which is approved, they will delay our apportionment. So it's a hard and fast deadline for us. And so backing up from there, we are currently today giving you the preliminary, just high-level budget update. Uh the June twenty-fourth is supposed to be our budget presentation and public hearing. However, because the state has been slow in releasing these systems to us, I may have to push that to our July twenty-second. For the meeting. So I just wanna give you that heads up and caveat, that may have to slide a little bit. I was just notified today that the system will be up by next week. And so we've all been anticipating all school districts. I feel sorry for the big school districts that have a lot more work, a lot more detail. So, um so that's where we are. And the reason why that might get delayed is because when you do the public hearing. You have to have your, what they call the F one ninety-five, which is the full budget document available for the public to review. And I just don't think they're even gonna be able to get that done in this short amount of timeline. So there there is a possibility. We'll make sure that we communicate to you, we can delay that just a little bit.
That's actually probably just as good as pushing the town hall budget meeting to June eighteen.
Right.
One of my pet pieces has always been, you know, we go and ask the public for input. And then the next day we're asked to approve it and have time to react to anything. So this will give us at least a little time to actually take in input and maybe make some adjustments, so.
Perfect. That lowers my stress level. So thank you, Amy. We appreciate that. Um so just to, and I know Director Larson will be definitely joining me on this component of the presentation is the legislative session. So of course, this was the long session. It began on January fourteenth and ended on April twenty-seventh. There was a lot of churn in this session, mainly because they were faced with a twelve million dollar shortfall over the next four years. And so in their efforts to do a balanced budget, they did prioritize K twelve education. And cut other areas in their budget pretty significantly. Now, when I say prioritize, there still wasn't a lot given. And so I'll go through some of those items as well. And then, and so in the specific areas that we were really, really pushing for, they did provide some additional funding in special education. And material supplies and operating costs. And there was a provision in the transportation bill to fund, to fund transportation for like other types of. Vehicles besides just our yellow buses. So we can now, we will be able to provide to fund transportation in vans. Which is really, really helpful, especially when we're transporting somewhere in K V students. So that that's a little bit good news. I don't know what that looks like and I know they can determine what that revenue component might be like at this point.
And the big, the big, the big thing that they didn't do was do it.
Of course.
So some of the major bills that were passed was fifty-one ninety-two, which is the MSO bill. Uh basically that gives us a little bit more than two hundred eighty-four thousand dollars in additional funds compared to this prior year. Okay, uh so what I did was I compared the prior year, FTE, multiplied it by their factor. Next year's kind of components, what would we estimate we think we want to have for students? And that's how I came up with that doll. Uh, the local levies increases the current levy cap. So for next year, we will receive an additional two hundred forty-seven thousand-ish in funding. So we've gone to all our voters. Uh, because they've increased the levy cap, that just gives us more capacity to collect closer to that full amount.
So this, this, this is the big one actually, because, and this is the one that they did horribly inequitably. Um, and the reason is because, I mean, we'll get this amount because when we go and ask for levies, we build in a certain amount of cushion because it's a four-year levy and, and the total amount we can collect goes up by inflation each year. So we have to build in, so there's, there's some cushion built in. However, um, what this bill does is it allows, it allows us to go out and collect a lot more. Except we would have to go back to voters and ask them for more.
Yeah.
The problem with that is we're on a four-year cycle. And our four-year cycle doesn't come up again until twenty twenty-eight. And so if you're, you know, and the, the huge inequity part is most of the districts have a cycle that comes up in twenty twenty-six. And if we had our cycle came up in twenty twenty-six, we could probably do it. It's still a bad idea because they're pushing, you know, more, more responsibility back onto the local. We're supposed to be taking it over the state level and they didn't want to do that. So, but you know, of course, districts like, you know, almost all of the, Worcester Island, Bellevue, Lake Washington, Isakwa, all the really wealthy areas, they will be able to add more money fairly easily in their twenty twenty-six and get a lot of local money. However, for us to try to convert that stuff would be really ill-advisable partly because, you know, as, I mean, we're all taxpayers. If you looked at your, you know, your property tax bill for last year, it went up a lot for too many reasons. One is the local fire district came in and then also our, our capital projects levy increased a little bit as well. And so as a result of that, typical taxpayers had, had the biggest, you know, property tax increase of anybody in King County, except for I think one other town or something. So we're already a huge increase. And so to come back in that environment and, and say, you know, between cycles, add another, I mean, that, I mean, I've already, you know, contacted our, you know, Ryan Hager, who's our campaign expert, and he knows more about it. You know, what can pass and what cannot pass. And he, you know, he agrees, this is, that would not be a good idea. And we're talking, I mean, we'll have to wait and see. Hopefully our CFO can calculate, and we don't need to do this right now, but in the next few months, how much more we could get if we went out to the vote. I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna be millions of dollars, but we'll find out what the exact number is.
Before you move on, I got a comment and a question.
Yeah.
One, I, I just wanna, cause we get misrepresented when we're doing our thing publicly. I want to make sure we're accurate and we talked about the fire authority. Fire authority costs the same amount, maybe a little bit of increase when we finally went full with the fire authority.
Yeah.
It's the fact that the city is allowed to retain the full amount.
Right.
Part of it or none of it.
Right, right.
And they didn't sunset as much as they thought they would. And so that's why our taxes went up. The question is, on cycles, because I don't understand it well, how did we get out of sync? Or how did the other school districts get out of sync with us?
So that, that predates my time. And so I don't know why we're not, I mean, there's like two or three other districts in the area that are on our cycle. Why we got it that cycle, I have no idea.
So I can, and I can interject a little bit with that. So districts have a choice of doing a three-year, four-year or six-year levy. And some districts do a six-year levy, most do four-year levies. But those that are on six-year levies obviously will be off-cycle from the rest of us. And the reason why some do six-year levies is because they have a harder time with their mothers. So if they push it out longer, they don't have to go to their mothers quite as often. And most people do the four-year because of these types of situations. Or if you have your property taxes or, excuse me, the assessed valuation jump up and you didn't build in enough capacity, you're leaving a whole lot on the table. So, um, most districts stick with the four-year, but there are some who do six-year levies.
And I don't mean to recommending to change it. Certainly not before we know whether we're actually better off as we are or the change of things.
Yeah, we need to, we need to get the actual numbers, which is gonna take a little while because, like you said, it's high skill figuring out what's going on. So, and we don't need to make this decision right now, but it's, it's, what was, so I had long, and Dr. Berthold, I copy here on these, but long back and forth with our representative Steve Berquist, who's actually the, he's the prime sponsor of this bill. And this bill barely made it through the House for a lot of reasons. It, it made it through to the House fifty to forty-eight, so there's eight Democrats that voted against it. Uh, most ended, it went through the Senate on a straight party line. But, you know, so there's, there's a lot of problems, you know, equity problems with this. And, and the, actually the Seattle Times, their word for this, they came out with an editorial called it unconscionable because of the inequities that it just, you know, increases in the system. So anyway, well, that's some, once we get the facts, I would recommend we might actually have Representative Berquist come in. And, you know, he can present his, why he thinks, like I said, we went back and forth on emails. He thinks we should do this, but, you know, we'll see.
Yeah, one of the things that we talked about, I talked with Director Larson, is about maybe having a, maybe during a work session, so we can have actual conversations.
You do.
Downward, so, I mean, not, not just on this topic, but actually to even talk with for levy planning, right? Because that's come up as well. So we talked about that with also Director Fredennis about, you know, we talked about capital planning, all those kinds of things. So we talked about having a work session just on this topic on levy and levy planning for the future. And we can lump it all together, but there's, but there's two different topics. One is this piece and then the other is the, the, the capitals, projects, planning, yeah.
And the question about, you know, whether we're on sync with other, it's like, there's, there's pros and cons to that. Sometimes it depends, a lot of what goes on in down valid issues, which is what this is, can be heavily influenced by what's going on at the higher. And so if you're in a position where, you know, there's a lot of anti-tax stuff going on, you would maybe want to be off-cycle. And so anyway, there's pros and cons to be on or off-cycle, but anyway.
Uh, Senate Bill fifty, fifty-one sixty-seven gave us a little boost, actually it was current year, uh, biennial budget, the one that we're in right now. And so they've given an additional fifty dollars per student in one-time funding that will come on in June apportionment. So we'll see a little bit of a bigger blip as a result of that, which is a little bit of the news because June is usually a really tough month for apportionment purposes anyway. So we're estimating, it's not a lot, but we're getting about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
Is what, what if they take fifty, fifty dollars per student? What, what are they, what's the intention here? I used to be a customer of money, obviously, but like fifty dollars?
I can tell you the, the back and forth that I had with Representative Berquist is, you know, what's, if you look at the legislature, what they always want to do every year is kind of say all the good things they did for you and just kind of forget all of that. So this is one of those things they can put in, well, we supported education.
Sure.
Check, 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 check. And we won't talk about all the others, so.
We won't talk about it, we got rid of Paul Pugh, it's a side brand.
Yes. Yes. It's a pattern.
If you listen to Wrightdale's campaign, he ran it, she said that we're behind a thousand dollars per student across the state. So the fifty is just kind of like a tip and coin bucket there, it seems strange.
And you, you can put it into the category of it's an insult.
Yeah.
Well, I'll take it rather than.
Yes.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yes, we are grateful for the, the additional. Uh, fifty-two, two sixty-three is the special education. This one is a little bit complicated because there's a number of different factors in this that are levels, I should say, that are driving the additional funding, but there's also some offsets to that. And so I wasn't even going to attempt, because this is one of those that's really important for this revenue information to come up from the state, so that when we plug in all of our figures, it will nicely do the calculations for us, so we know what the exact impacts of any increases to us are. First caveats with this, it requires us to use, so a lot of times what you're seeing in districts as they report your own financials is because we're not fully funded in this area, we show that we're using our local levy. Right? It's common sense because we don't get enough state funding to support special education programs. They actually wrote it into the bill that you cannot do that. So we have to show that we're using other state apportionment dollars to fund special education.
So that's what they call a shell game.
There's lots of, there's lots of ideas floating out there in the business world as to why we think the legislature is doing this. And this is one of the areas where we became really, really good showing the legislature where we're underfunded, actually this and MSOB. On this one, we became really good about showing exactly where we're underfunded, how we're underfunded and how much we're underfunded. By moving this to say that we're using other components of state apportionment and not using local levy, they're trying to drive the conversation to be a little bit harder to show how we're not fully funded. So that's one of the thoughts. In the MSOB category, they used to break it out into specific categories. You would have a dollar amount for technology per student, you would have a dollar amount for like general supplies, a dollar amount for insurance. This latest, this budget collapsed everything and it's a flat dollar amount. Because what we were doing is we were showing how we were really good about being underfunded in specific categories, specifically utilities and insurance. And so that's just another thing that we thought that they were doing so that we can no longer say that we are underfunded in these specific categories. Now it's a harder conversation, so I'm just.
Special education is they're trying to protect themselves against the lawsuit that will be coming because yeah, you know, special education is clearly basic education, which the state by law has to pay for. So if they should say, oh, well, you're not, you're not having to use local levy money for that.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's just, it's all a shell game.
Yeah.
And just to share, we had that, I'm, I'm gonna say Director Burdo and, and CFO Fleming actually created a, a pager, quick pager, just to show in those three categories. So just for people to understand for the record, for MSOB, special education and transportation combined, Takola School District in the last five years has been shorted about over thirteen million dollars, just in those three categories for the state. And we testified on that behalf at the, at the state level. But it's a thirteen million just for those three areas over the last five years. That doesn't count all the other areas.
And then fifty-four twelve does, they did pass that. That provides the temporary interphone loans for school districts in binding conditions. And so a part of that now allows school districts that are in binding conditions to sell property. And then they can use a portion of those proceeds to ensure that they are getting themselves out of that financial instability. They cannot use it for raises, they cannot use it for, you know, any other purpose other than to probably get themselves back to a, a fund balance. So for us, it would be a minimum fund balance. So if we ever decided to sell property, we can use that to make sure that we got towards six percent. And then everything else we can have to go into the capital projects.
Question, they, they, they passed this, but it has not been signed in the law, has it?
Yes, so the governor, the governor signed all those, uh, twenty of them, so he had signed all of those.
Okay.
This is one that was signed.
He signed the whole thing, he didn't veto any of it.
The other item in that area is that we can take an interphone loan because we are in binding conditions and we do not pay interest back to the capital projects fund. So if we do have to take another interphone loan, which I'm hopeful that we won't have to at this point, we would not be required to repay.
It can't be like that. That'd be great.
Nice, but unfortunately.
Silly question, but what, before this, what are kind of the restrictions around selling property?
Um, I would have to look at the RCW, but I know that you have to have, you know, property valuations done. It has to be done at fair market value.
I think it only happened once within a certain time period, correct? Yes, that's another caveat, only once.
You can only do it one time, so that is the other caveat. But in order to sell property, I can go through all the processes, you have to, you know, the public hearings, everything else.
So this kind of eliminates some of those hurdles that you would normally otherwise.
No, it would eliminate those hurdles, it just, because right now by law, any property sales has to be in the capital projects fund.
Got it, okay.
This allows us to view, to have some of those funds deposited to the general.
Okay, I see.
So that's, that's the big difference.
Got it, thanks.
And then they did, you know, they didn't really have all the nasty things they did down here. Like one of them was increasing sales tax on services, temporary services, which includes all the school districts contract out for special education services, all that kind of stuff. Is now going to be ten percent higher because of the sales tax. It whacked our other education program, our OSSI grants and, and I, you know, I don't think we even know all, all of them yet. It's, it's gonna take a while for this work through, but that's hundreds of thousands of dollars that just got whacked.
Yeah, the big one, the big one in the revenue package is Director Larson was referring to is sales tax on temporary staffing agencies and any in-person presentations. Are we are now required to pay sales tax? Well, we will be required to pay sales tax on any types of those types of services. Uh, so I just did a really quick calculation, that's a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars that we would have to pay using this year's expenditures, assuming that we spent, you know, all of the dollars that we said we didn't would. That would be a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars additional that we have to pay. So, you know, we talk about FSOCs and how they gave us additional funding. Well, part of that just got wiped out because we're now required to pay sales tax on some of these services that we never have to pay sales tax.
Did you say in-person presentations? Did you set it to online ones?
It didn't say, it said in-person presentations.
Seems like we'd want to steer our direction towards the online as possible.
I know that there's been some, or at least I think, I mean, there's always, we're always gonna have to contract out, right? For some things. But has there been kind of some shifting that's been done over the last three years to, 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 to bring some of that into the district staff? Or, you know, I'm seeing a little bit, a little bit, okay.
We do have some hard-to-fuel positions that we end up having to hire on the temporary staffing agency contracts. And so it's funny because this bill was designed to bring more dollars in the special education that was passed. And our temporary staffing contracts are because it's hard to deal with positions in special education. So I'm, you know, it's just, when you start reading into this with, you know, the fact that the legislature really doesn't interest me on school districts and what that does to us. You know, so you're giving us more money, but then you're taking it away because we're turning around and have to pay the sales tax now. So it's, it's interesting to me. Um, in the federal funding arena, we're still not getting a lot of information. The state has not received allocations. Uh, so, uh, the big, the big one for us is Title One. That is the one where I'm going to make the assumption that we are not going to have significant cuts. Um, you are staffing on that one. Uh, Titles Two, Three and Four. Um, Title Four, for sure, I'm worried about, um, Title Two and Title Three. I'm not, I'm not hearing a lot of information. So probably what I will do is staff for, or not staff, budget for capacity purposes, uh, not put staff on there so that it will be really easy to pull if the funding doesn't come through. I have not heard any, I, any inkling for the other three items on this list. And so we're, we're just continuing to watch. OSPI extends out, oh gosh, it seems to be almost weekly. But they're just, they're not getting information, so.
So those three figures are just kind of spitballing?
Uh, so Title One, I will, I will bet it is, we have, that one, that one's the biggest one. It's about a million dollars. Um, and then the, the rest are pretty, pretty easy, so.
Okay.
So that gets us into the updates for our FOSsens. And again, these are rough estimates. Until we get our revenue model issued by the state, I can really dive in and get a more accurate picture. So in total, we're looking at about sixty-two point three million dollars. We're assuming the federal programs built into the capacity. And then I'm building in about two million dollars with the capacity for new revenues. So as we continue going through the, through the year. So as we continue going through the, through the year, we're always looking for grants. And so I have to have capacity in both the revenue and expenditure side. So if it does come through, it, it makes it easy for me to just go ahead and deploy that out rather than coming to you all for a little expansion because that is a lot of. So that's where we are on this page. On the expenditure side, we're continuing to work through our expenditure detail plans. We are looking at the following priorities, obviously, we need to meet our binding condition requirement of our four percent fund balance by the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-six. And we're also looking to incorporate or prioritize both board and the budget advisor committee priorities and recommendations. And then really making sure that we're developing and having capacity on the expenditure side for some of the professional development that we really need to have for our staff in the district. Obviously, we know that we have long-term challenges. Basically because we are a small district and the future of the state budgeting system is, is pretty concerning. You know, the fact that we continue to see cuts at all levels makes it really, really difficult. So obviously, we have to meet our four percent fund balance. We have to monitor our moment very closely. I'm, I am still concerned a little bit of, you know, loss of student enrollment, especially with some of our students maybe moving out of the area. We are seeing some increases in utilities, insurance, and the special education area. And then the sales tax that I've already talked about. In the future, obviously, we have labor agreements. So this summer, we have the S E I Z bargaining, and the next year we'll have T E A bargain open up again. So those are always things that I will have to work on. And then last but not least is that we do need to plan for an E L A adoption soon. And so trying to build in some capacity planning purposes over the next year and a half so that we can make sure that we have capacity to do that adoption.
On the utilities, is that coming from local, I mean, it's local or is it coming through like Seattle City Light and things like that?
Well, they're all municipal, so it's, we have several utilities. It was funny, I was talking, talking to my accountant because she was like, how can we have so many? I said, well, it depends on where we are in the district, but you're right, we have Seattle City Light, we have City of Taquilla, we have Water District one twenty-five, and we have a component that's on the sewer, a sewer district as well, so. And the huge seven energy as well, so.
I know that's a lot, it's a long shot, but is it worth appealing? Just saying, look, we've been in binding conditions and we're barely making it. Can it give us a waiver for five years?
No, they, they're, they continue to raise rates just because the cost of them doing the business continues to go up as well, so.
Sometimes we have a grace progress, I'm just curious, are you sure they don't do anything to schools ever?
Yeah, I'm sure they don't do.
You'd be surprised, when we build new facilities down here, we gave people ten-year waiver on taxes, two schools and two. But the Seattle, you know, it's doing some struggling, may have vulnerability to that. Lighten the load or just push it off. I don't know, which is worse, but just, but we don't even ask?
Uh, no, we don't ask because if I were to ask, just think of what Seattle's school district will be asking for as well. And they're in worse situation than us, so, yeah, I just, I just don't see how a utility company is going to give us in grace.
There's just not a lot of people in binding conditions like we are, so it doesn't make us.
Yeah, but I would argue that there's a lot of families that are also in a lot of financial, you know, struggles as well. And I think that would be their focus a little bit of school districts. Yeah.
Okay. Not sure what's allowed legally on this stuff, it seems like. You can appeal your property taxes and all kinds of things as an individual, and you're saying schools will never do that. Okay.
So for next steps, again, we've talked about the G twenty-four date most likely sliding. So most likely we'll have a budget presentation probably during the July twenty-second meeting. So just wanted to bring that up, so. And that is the end of my presentation.
All right, so plus questions that haven't been answered or asked for?
I just think, oh, for me, it's, 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 I love how you got the numbers out here. And then we have the different things that are passed or passed, right? And you have some dollar amounts that's in there. What's helpful is if I can see what we have currently being spent and then what if with the dollars, like, because we're, we're saying it's a shell game, right? So some might be, yes, it's here, but then it's gonna get taken and it's gonna be spent. I, I kind of, I wanna see what actual dollars though. So if I, if you give me a number of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we gotta prove, but really, it's ninety thousand after we have to pay this ten percent that you already looked at. I kind of need to, I need to reel what, if there is, you know, that's gonna be above that. And then with that reel that we have, then for like materials, if it's, if that cost of that is going up, which I'm assuming it is, and then also in the building. And what's our projected, if it's going up, six percent, then how does that chip away at that? And then what do we have at the very end? Because when I see, you know, I'm like, yeah, it's two hundred and fifty grand, great, you know what I mean? But what does it really dwindle down to once we look at it? And so that's, that's, I, I'm sure you're gonna have a presentation on that and how that's gonna all, all impact us. And that would be great, and the sooner it would be, better so that we can, you know, make it happen. And then also, I'm looking here, so on your page eighteen, right? On your federal programs at this time, we're assuming funding at the federal, right? And then you're, you're, you were talking, I just, I wanna be sure I'm clear about this. So were you guys saying that they did do that recently? Or are we still waiting to hear from them about this part?
So on the federal funding component, we are still waiting to hear from them.
And so, so they're asking.
To make the assumption that the funding is flat. So as we are starting to apply for our federal funding through the state to use current year's numbers. I've actually dropped them a little bit, so my projection is showing like a five percent cut as I'm doing my planning, because I don't know what that looks like for us. And so as I'm looking through the budget com- components and processes, the only federal grant that has staffing right now is the Title One grant. And all other grants are, the specialized federal funding right now is a contacted service anyway. That's what we use those funds for, we do not have staffing on the federal component. And so I'll continue to enter because it will be using for us to kind of, uh, to cut contracts versus, it's much harder for us to cut staffing.
So the contracts, so is that what we're talking about, the ten percent increase that they're going to be hitting us with with those contracted staff?
No, this one is, they're kind of out of district placements. So without going into a lot of detail about that, we're kind of out in district placements.
That's what we get for safety net.
So, you know, we also get some safety net dollars too.
By the way, that doesn't seem that the special education services are gonna be less. It means you're gonna have to pull it from somewhere else because the special educations are I D Ps which are legal contracts.
Yeah, and I'm curious to see how that's gonna all pan out. You know, and, and especially if we're not able to use the funding the way that we were. And then we're going to need to pull it from somewhere else.
So what will have to happen is that we will have to reopen our agreements. No matter what.
Well, and that's what I, as long as, as long as, I, I need to be super clear. You know, so if that's where, if that's where we're at, I want that to be heard here so that we can sit and, and this is the discussion that we're gonna have to move forward.
We will have to, yeah, we have to, no matter what, we would have to reopen our ord- agreements to have that conversation. What we're gonna do to resolve that because we can't go back into a negative fund balance. So that, that's just kind of where we are.
Okay, so on, sorry. I'm gonna keep digging here a little bit here. So now on our students' seats, right? We kind of had this conversation before and that's kind of always my focus is always how many students we have in our seats and trying to base our budget through that. And I agree, you know, we're getting other funding stuff, but I really wanna build a budget around what's sustainable and that, as controllable as we can see, right? So in doing that, and, and I heard you mention that we're gonna probably be losing some students. And I think we can all agree with the current climate and we're gonna lose some students. Are we projecting for that next year? And then al- also, I'm thinking as far as staffing wise, are we, are we also, okay, so we're, we're, we're looking at that. I mean, this is, these are hard subjects that we have to talk about. I wanna make sure that we're on pace with that because this is the time, if we're gonna be doing it. You know, we're coming up on, on agreed time, okay? So we're, we're also.
So I'm using a budget, not including running stars, of two thousand five hundred million students. Right now, we're at about twenty-six thirty-six, I think, was the last time I looked. So I have, I am projecting a lower number of students moving into the next fiscal year. And I've been monitoring them every month to see, we're starting to see big drop-offs. And we've started to lose a few students, but it's in the areas that I anticipate that we lose, lose students. You see it more at the high school level typically, you know, as the year progresses, and that's where I'm starting to see it. I'm not seeing it at the elementary level right now. I was actually anticipating to see some student loss at the elementary level, I'm really not seeing it. It's been flat, which is good. And so it's just monitoring that and paying attention to kind of what's going on to see if students will be returning next year, so.
Do you have predictive charts, like if it's this level, we'll get this much money, if it's that level, we'll get that much money already laid out, so you just plug it in?
Yeah, a little bit, so, and then that's part of the revenue component that I'm waiting on is so that I can, I can plug in a couple of different scenarios, but I've been, yeah, I've been playing with some scenarios with their estimator. It'll be really helpful once the, the true level component comes out to us to do all of this.
Do you have the help you need for the capacity of what's being asked for you because of all the changes that's here? Plus having to meet, yeah, exactly, no, no, and, and I need.
And we can't afford to burn anybody else's, so it's, you know, it's just, it is what it is.
I have a request though.
Okay, be- because, yes.
I have a request.
I, I, I know, I know, and we laugh about it because we want. Because we find it stressful, it's kind of letting go, but I wanna make sure, this is part of what we're talking about. We have to build this into it so that our budget's gonna be a sound budget because we don't wanna have to face this again, right? And so, how, okay, so the answer is no, that's not a good answer, but I like the truth because that's what we need to do. So we have to make, we're having our meeting, we're going to be looking at with the community, and then we have to have our budget, and then we have to have it submitted to the state and they're giving us the information late. I guess I'm looking, Dr. Joseph, is what do we have? And I know, and I know there's not backfill because that's where we kind of got here, here. Where, we need to think creatively to make sure that the budget is as sound as possible. And if we can't have, if, if she's not equipped and has it to there and we're asking her to do this. And this is also all our staff for the next year, of what we're looking at, you know, it's, it's very important. We try not to make any missteps as best we can. Of course, we have to try to get, you know, there's gonna be some, we're gonna have to look and, and students and who's gonna be here and who's not gonna be here. I think we need to rethink a little bit and maybe prioritize. And yes, I heard there's nothing for help, but maybe we need to find something.
No, we had a conversation actually today. I know what the long-term request is, which can't be filled yet, but there's a short-term request to support the budget office. And I actually am going to be meeting with the team to talk about, because it means repositioning a few, reorganizing a few things in the, in the, in the organization. So we're trying to build up people's strengths, you know, using them in their capacity. I ask specifically, what do you need right now? I have the information on specifically on the support, the finance department and budget office needs, but I also know what they need long-term, so, but we're gonna make some of those changes.
So if money were no logic, would you have a different finance person or what would you have, a different CPA?
No, not a CPA. I would probably restructure a little bit, you know, maybe a budget analyst as a part of the group, you know, to do the work. And so, but there, there's no capacity right now to do that. There's no way to do that.
I'm just worried about two things, I don't want you to burn out and head for Alaska. And then, then the second thing is, you go through these peaks and valleys, but you know, there's a pretty solid, all of your bound requests. And so when is it you get time away and what happens when you are away?
Uh, so I, actually, I do, I do take time, I'll, you know, I'll take a few days off here and there. I mean, this weekend, I took Friday off and I was, I went camping this weekend. So I know how to, I know how to kind of disconnect and, and get away. And when I get away and I get away, it's like no cell service, I'm like, well, I completely.
A hundred percent.
And so, yeah, this last weekend was wonderful because I was just able to disconnect and not, yeah. Yeah, and we are kind of thinking of this when I'm like, okay, I'm done, I've gotta get, I've just gotta.
I mean, everybody's going through it, the health allowances, I'm still not okay.
But yeah, I, I think we can talk more about what.
I will, I'm willing to talk more about it because I wanna build that into a budget as we're looking forward to the future of making this district healthy and then making sure that your office is not forgotten. I mean, we focus definitely a lot on students and definitely focus on the teachers and staff, but I wanna make sure that your office is also there so that it is gonna be taken care of because it takes care of the district, make sure that we're, we're gonna have to obviously have more talks here with our groups. And so then there's quite a bit. And with the changes that's rapidly taking place, we're asking you to kind of be on the pulse of that. And then quickly adjust the budget and we're already, which, they give us a dead, you know, deadline. So it's, it's a little dramatic, to say the least, and to make sure that we can, you know, we're gonna go into next year, so.
And I think there's also important for consistency and succession planning, right? So that someone is really trained up and ready to go whenever it is that you might move on.
I say retire.
And we're asking you, whoever's in your position, to make sure we don't get in this position again. So we're asking that, that same thing. So, so there is a lot being asked upon you right now and I appreciate it. I know all the staff appreciate it and we just wanna make sure that going forward, you're gonna get the support you need. And at this time, you know, please speak up and let us know if there's something that we can do or if there's something that was within our power or budget to do to make sure that we can get this part. This is extremely.
Um, not necessarily comment about the presentation, just wanna acknowledge, you know, there were a lot of questions that came up at the, the arts presentation conversation, the work session, that Dr. Pedroza asked how we best wanted that addressed. So I just wanted to name for the board that I've asked that, that get wrapped up into a future budget conversation since it all was budget-related and how we're gonna make sure that the arts program is not just sustaining but growing. So just naming that, if we can make sure that that gets added into likely the next budget presentation that happens, that would be swell.
All right.
Thank you. Just out of a hot seat just yet. Questions only presentations here, so the monthly financial statement, what additional questions do folks have here? Just a comment celebration, as Dr. Joza just pointed out, maybe you can go to page six, please. Sorry, you're all the way down the bottom, sorry about that. One below that, I think, sorry. Yeah, there we go. So just wanna highlight that blackish line there, not the one that's straight, right? But the one that, that's this year's ending fund balance compared to last year's and even the year before's, before. So I just wanna acknowledge, and I know we continue to do so, but the incredible amount of work and emotional labor, right, by the entire team and, and specifically Ms. Fleming. So I just wanna say that like this is pretty remarkable, right? That we've been able to do this, again, it was not without challenges and some pain to our district. And I know that because of what we had to do. Um, and I know that because of what we had to do, you know, five, ten years from now. We are gonna be a, a, a more thriving district, um, and so just wanted to highlight that, um, that's a pretty big, pretty big shift and a pretty big deal, so. Well, if nothing else on this one, um.
Well, no.
Okay, next is the financial forecast.
Yep.
Anything additional here? With the new charts. All right, well, thank you, I'm not done.
Oh, you're not done yet, oh, yeah, okay.
All right, so this is the, um, Department of Health and Maintenance Operations and the Capital Projects. What additional questions, comments, thoughts you folks have?
Dr. Pedroza had suggested to provide you with the.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Something to give it to us to. That's a, you can take mine and that would be here.
So my question, I'm kind of curious, so first of all, congratulations on getting the solar projects, that's really nice. And also, I think, uh, as Mr. Kabato was saying, it's tied into students, uh, pushing during time. They know they've been fishing for solar for a while and in addition to the recycling, so our students are, um. You know, climate aware, shall we say, and they should be since it's their role, it's gonna be coming down, so. Um, I was just kind of curious about, uh. I think we applied for the foster grant and getting, having walked by the foster, this is really, I mean, the only place, the logical way to put it would be on the athletic wing. Where that's sloping, that'll root, but.
We have a greater space also above the academic wing.
Okay.
On that area is flat.
Flat, and you just put a stretch rock there, yeah. And so you said they didn't give you any reason for why not?
No, I think it was, uh, the reason we did actually apply for, you have to send a request, they didn't send us anything at all. They only stated that there were so many applications that received or that there were great projects out there. Uh, but we actually were lucky to receive Taku Ranch Water. And I would say it's a great, uh, a good deal to receive to want because this is one of our highest UIs. And the projects are completely used to reduce our UIs based on the house being four fifty seven that we're trying to reduce and comply. So all these projects that we're trying to do is are kind of linked to reducing our UIs and try to comply with that, with the house yield.
Yeah, it seemed like it was, um, I mean, I had a really good haul of like four million and I think the total was forty something million.
Um.
For the whole, uh, department for this, it was like ten percent of the whole.
Yeah.
A lot of money, which is really good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's the two point lead, two point five for, uh, Chouater and one point seven, sorry if I am not, uh. Uh, let me see where we can have that information, uh, so it's one point seven for, I believe, so it's three five two point.
So I'm kind of curious, and this is kind of going forward to see, I, I noticed that the.
Oh, I can hear you.
Techol Elementary one involves battery storage as well.
Yes.
Um, which I'll be interested to see if like over one percentage of the total utility bill is gonna be offset by seeing solar panels. Um, actually, you don't know that now, but you know, as, as you go through. And then I assume the.
Yeah.
The idea of having a, uh, battery backup would be that there could be, um, kind of resistance to power items? Is that the point of having the battery backup there?
Yes, actually, it just to be, be able to save our, our energy and use our, our own energy instead of using. Purchased energy from the A P S R.
But they should, they should have given you kind of a, uh, but for, they should have been able to give you, your, took your electric bill. They tell you how many pounds and they should, should give you like a report, right, and what it offset? And then what the battery is, you know, capability of one day or two days or whatever the power is, so you should have some of those numbers if. If you wanted to see what the, the offset would, they, they will give you this.
Yeah, I, well, I just, I forgot that part.
Yeah, I have that information, but what I, what I have is a pretty, pretty narrow numbers.
Yeah.
Uh, and I will share those with you, I will send us from tomorrow, and you will be receiving those, those numbers, so.
Yeah, because I mean.
Information, and where especially where the, they are located, where located in the building will be the, the panels inside.
Because, I mean, don't get stuck at elementary, for example, they have massive space, so they're frying stuff and they just like, they're affecting them easily. Kind of, I mean, this is just our electric bill, obviously, I don't know what the gas bill is and things like that, but it could very well thrive the entire. And then the question becomes, yeah, how much are we gonna be saving, you know, year after year after year, year after year?
And and because of the top seven, we, we had to work with, connecting with the energy, uh, energy program. Uh, that all our bills, our electrical and gas bills are, uh, put in this software, uh, program that, uh, so we now have history. We now have history on how much we're spending, how much UIs, how much what's, so we can have now reports coming to that, to them.
Yeah, so, I mean, and as I mentioned, as we can expand this, this is a, an educational opportunity for our students. I mean, hopefully there'll be some units in the science classes and some tours about, you know, what's going on. So the students understand all, everything that's going on and.
And we intend to do that, especially getting students involved into the preliminary sign and then, uh, construction part of that program. Um, at this moment, we're right now signing contracts, I'm trying to get all that, but as soon as we're having a schedule in place, we'll be connecting with, with, especially with high school.
Yeah, I think also we have elementary students too, which is, it's going on, they're making science lessons on.
Yeah.
You know, what's going on and, you know, I mean, the students will be curious, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other one I'm curious about is the, um, these grants involving the, the indoor air. Um, so you said the, the measure here, I mean, how do we go about determining? Um, where we want to spend some dollars, these grand dollars to improve the ventilation? And it seems to me that we want to know, you know, what is the, I mean, what you said there, you're gonna measure using a pannometer, which is, you know, just a wind. Um, volume measurement as opposed to, um, you know, fine particle? I mean, the, the thing that messes people's, um, you know, kids' lungs and so forth, there's something of those fine particles they're getting. So it seems like we want to be measuring a couple of things. One is, you know, where in our buildings, you know, are the highest amounts of these, uh, concentration of these particles? And then also looking at, you know, the, the asthma rates in our students? Because it would seem to me logical where you want to make sure that you have a good quality ventilation system. Is if asthma rates are high and the air quality is poor, that's where you want to go. And it kind of implies here that you're just gonna be looking at, you know, how much outdoor air is being circulated, which. The other problem, the other issue is, since like Cascade View is sitting under the plane at the C J airport. And so maybe the outdoor air isn't so good, so maybe we don't want to be, so anyway, it just, it strikes me that there's, that you should be looking a little more fine grained about.
Right, so what we're, we're thinking about on these A I P assessments is exactly measure the amount of air coming into the building, in, into, into the classroom in the building. And compare all that velocity and, uh, to the O P R E S information that was, that was done. Now, in order to do a study like that, that you are requesting a lot, and if we need to do, we need to get, uh, a company, laboratory company to see. What we are, where we add with all these, um, um. This is called volatile compounds in the air, um, and that will cost me, uh, at this point, so, um. We were doing, so. I'm not sure exactly if we wanted to do it as, as general, just only a cascade, but that would be, I would have a laboratory person to guide. And get some air, something to figure it out how the air is, um. So I should, I would say that I will be figuring out with budget, maybe, um, I will have to research that, um.
Beautiful.
Okay, asthma rate, uh, studies like that, I would like to, need to get it with, uh, in. The part, the Department of Special Services to see how many kids have reported asthma issues or health issues, um. We can try to figure it out a little bit, something, but, um, include the studies itself to figure it out how much. Please in the air and how much it will affect the student, that's a little more to a lab, um. Specimen recollection than, than, than just the H V A system and the indoor system.
Is it likely that, that either King County or the Port of Seattle has done some of those studies?
Uh, the only study that I'm aware of is the study that I, uh, with the, um, airport, um.
Yeah.
That you had mentioned, there was a study done, the, the University of Washington, which takes samples. That, that study was inconclusive because they actually didn't know where the, uh. The molecules, I would say, were coming from. They were not a hundred percent sure they were coming from airplanes or they were coming from traffic. Traffic, we have several, several highways in the area, I five, um, five or six that are so close to the, to the school. Or it's only the, or highway ninety nine, so they needed to do at that time, they needed to do more studies in order to pinpoint exactly what is, what is happening. So it was inconclusive, they know that there is some, something in the air coming from the airport, but they don't know exactly where it's coming from.
I mean, it's, it's an odd point. Anecdotally very obvious, on the foggy mornings and anytime there's a high wind, southern wind, after a major, heat dome goes through. All I have is open door and I shut it right again, I don't even want my dog out there, there's so much jet fuel in the air. So I live five doors away from the C D, I know what our kids are getting and they are only a half block away from where we have a lot of transitional housing. I, uh, I would venture, you know, a hundred fifty people, probably like one third of them are the kids. So we know they're there, we know the noise is bad and we know the, the air is bad, is it better than it used to be? Yeah, Port of Seattle's done a lot, a lot of good things, so I tend to stay on the happy side of it and try to keep encouraging more, but it's, you know. We got jet fuel and, and it's either in the plane and being expended and they, they shut those planes down quicker now and off the A beams and plug in as fast as they can. So they're doing way better than they used to be, but it is pretty sickening when it's happening. And I, I moved in without kids knowing that I could do that on an Air Force back and around Airfield three and around probably die ten years younger than they should. But I would have never done that if I had children. I literally wouldn't live where I live if I had children, children, knowing where.
For this purpose, it almost doesn't matter where the particles are coming from, we want a ventilation system that's gonna, you know, clear them out. No matter where they're, I don't care if they're coming from the bar from the, you know. And so, and so it's, and it's not necessarily, you know, we had the conversation with one of our, um. Uh, state representatives about what they're doing in Highline and, you know, they were not, I mean, obviously, in Cascade View, we're not gonna restructure the age access. Because it's something to tear the building down. But you could put standalone, you know, ventilators in there to clean out some of the air. And that's what they did and they got grants from the state, um, under the Climate Greenback, which is where I think this money is coming from as well. And that's actually, that's a nice reliable money because it's coming from the auction that the state is running, so it's not gonna be subject to the vagaries of the legislature, uh, as much. So, uh, it just, you know, it seems like we're gonna be having, um, a little more focus on what the students, um. Are experiencing and, you know, what we can, I mean, it doesn't, I mean, I have one of those monitors for like a hundred bucks to measure, that I can measure it in my house and outside. You know, it's not expensive, I mean, I don't know if some, to have somebody come in and do it, yeah, they'll probably charge a zillion dollars. I'm not sure that's necessary to get some idea about, you know, what the, what the numbers are.
I'm thinking about, you're, you're speaking with me and my, my head is, it's coming, okay, so what we can do about that, right, okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yes.
It seemed like there should be somebody at the University of Washington, somebody that, you know, other than. You know, maybe the vendors that are gonna be incentive to blow up their price, um, to provide a, you know, a reasonable, a way of, of evaluating it. With, you know, a low cost method, I don't know, are you, do you have any idea?
They're coming on Thursday, um, so there's a professor from U W D, studies led, uh, who we should be in our area, we're actually between three airports, right?
Yeah.
So they're, they're gonna get fostered on Thursday to talk with students about, um, the particular matter in the air and how it impacts their lives. And the younger siblings' lives, what they're looking at, um, high blood levels, um, in younger is zero to three years old. Um, specifically like in Allentown, um, and areas around Tacoma. Um, and they're gonna be providing free, those, uh, air purifiers that you talked about, they're gonna be providing that for every student that tends to be in the library on Thursday. So if you all want to come to learn more about, um, how particular matter is impacting the health of our students, uh, you can come on by us, maybe.
Thursday, I think.
Ten, eleven?
Ten to eleven.
I think so, around there at the Foster School Library, um, and we're also having someone come out to, last thing I would say, come and test the soil kindergarten. Um, and all of that is, has been free, um, so they're gonna come test the soil, since we're in the, the flu, something Tacoma, lots of pollution in the soil. Um, all of that testing's been done for free, I just reached out to people and said, this is all we need done, let us do it for you, please. Because we're in such an high impact area, the airport adjacent, being between three airports, being near the major roadways, there's a lot of, um. There are significant health disparities in this area because of where we live.
Right.
Down in Allentown, it's the only second worst in the state and the first is an elementary school in Tacoma on both sides of I five because of the truck traffic. Um, he's right, it's three airports.
I just want to make sure, we're hopefully spending the money in a smart way that's gonna have the maximum for benefit of our students is kind of the bottom line. And however we can get that, that done, because I know, we've never had the report and I know, I mean, in fact, Dr. Joseph, I mean, we know how many of our students have asthma. I have, I, I personally don't know, but I mean, I know for a fact, I mean, every, every teacher, you know, has an inhaler. For every student in their class that has asthma, so that shouldn't be that hard to figure that one out and then.
I, I, I'm also, I do enforce, um, I do enforce, because every time that I go to the school to do inspections, they'll say, maybe it's coming. To tell you the truth, that also is education with staff members and I had a lot of support from, uh, principals to, to keep the, our policies that we have in place. Because sometimes it's the same teachers and the same staff members that bring things that are not supposed to be in our schools. The candles and the air freshness, that also is part of the, the year, the indoor air policies.
Yeah.
Um, uh, last year, we have a complaint from another teacher is because the teachers, uh, the teacher on the first floor had made these flowers in the classroom with that really, really strong. So we need, we need to also make sure that we are enforcing, uh, the policies that we have in place, so, so, so we have a better equality in our schools.
Yeah.
So one small question, just because we've visited upon trying to consider whether we want to work locker, um. Equipment and I think we postponed that off and we had students say that the lockers weren't that bad, of course, I'm hoping that picture that says they're tragic. And Charles, they always show the picture where they look the worst, what's, uh.
Yeah.
How much of that is it like that?
We have in, um, I, I believe there is a presentation later on the locker.
Okay, okay.
Do you, oh, you, I can, we can start right now.
I, I can, I, I can wait on it, my only other question is on projects to complete, if we don't come through for this year, well, we'll take its place.
Oh, we have a lot of emergency projects that they, that pops.
There wouldn't be any, any that pops up here on this list.
Yeah, we will have to use the funds, but that, I believe that the, uh, you may not know if I'm wrong, Amy, that, that funds keeps moving, we don't lose it.
Correct, so it's not like the general, it's the, because this is a levy, the, the fund will just continue to, um, obviously we have a healthy fund balance and so.
For me, all I'm thinking about is I figured you chose this project in summer because the kids aren't there and see, they'll tear it out, so it ought to be, I don't know. There's maybe ninety percent of the projects are, could be done when the kids aren't there, but I see. But I see it to be the next priority that could be done if some kids aren't there and it seems like that'd be pretty.
Yeah, and that's the reason we're trying to include most of the projects during the summer, so we have less interruption in classrooms.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so along those lines, and that was kind of my question is, is it, are the locker rooms. The most important thing? I mean, obviously, if we didn't do it this year, we'd probably have to wait a year, postpone a year. Be able to do them, but the question, and one of the projects, that's why I kind of asked for the list, is I didn't, I didn't see on here the. So we have a, the, you know, the. In the pack, let's see, you know, we spent money on it, but then it's not being installed because I'm not sure.
So, so what we did, when we um uh went through the bond process. And and we were, we opened the pack to use bond dollars. So it's different from levy dollars, right? So when we did that that project, the sound system was was uh also uh a item that we needed to improve. Now, uh so what happened is that we purchased some equipment to be installed. So the equipment that we we purchased were the the soundboards and some microphones to be installed. So because those. Those items were purchased by the tapos who distribute in bond owners, right? Uh, they were, they went, went ahead and we installed it, we purchased and we installed it. But the general project of improving the the pack, the whole project itself was put on hold. So then that included the additional sound system that we need. We need a news, we need, we need speakers, we need. Uh upgrade the uh electrical um in some of the areas. So there is a whole list of projects that we need to do. But because that was a bond bond dollars, that's a different part of money. So it was put on hold and one of the cars staying in here mostly is levy. So that's a different part of.
Isn't it all the capital projects?
It is, that when we go to our voters and we say we're gonna spend our bond dollars on this, these projects. Everyone is spending their capital leverage on these projects. If you started making it interregulable, those, the voters can get a little bit cranky with us. And so we have to be careful. If we have extra proceeds as we're working through those projects, then we can say, hey, we have excess dollars. Maybe some of these products didn't cost what we thought they were, I mean, unless. We could set those funds aside and say, okay, here's what's left over, what can we, what else can we fund? And then we can have the conversation about what is it we could do to the pack to start doing those remodel type activities. Uh until we um start seriously talking about the next bond that we're gonna.
So it's not fair to me, the, when you get the capital projects, uh but it's not fair how much is bond money and how much is levy money?
Well, the bond money has been spent. I mean, that, I mean, that was, I don't know if there's any funding left. Uh, from the bonds, because it was used for the project, all the projects. Um, and the reason why the pack got put on hold is because there wasn't enough funding. Am I correct on that?
Well, um, yes, yes, and uh yes, too, as well, but then whatever we have left was moved to pay for some. Was moved to the general fund. That was my answer. No, no, okay, that's not bad.
So, so, real quick, so going to the facts, so I remember, I'm I'm misunderstood, if I'm misunderstood, please correct me right now. I remember I was having a conversation here that there was items purchased that still needed to be installed for the sound system. And they're still, they're purchased and they're there, still needing to be installed. But what I thought you just said is it got purchased and installed.
Correct.
So which is, is it, is it all installed? And there's nothing in boxes sitting somewhere?
No. No, nothing's still.
Okay, great.
So when, yeah, so when you said, when the this is a soundboard and microphones.
Yes.
Yep.
And what's, in order to have a full upgrade, you need speakers.
Yeah, we need a speakers to run.
And electrical system upgrades.
Yeah, there's a lot more for that. We we need uh speak, the speakers, electric upgrades, we need.
Do you, do you have that, do you have that in a form, not just kind of off the top of your head? Do you?
I do have that information that was stopped. Uh, yes, I can send that to you.
Did you know that also?
Are we waiting on equipment?
Um, we're not waiting for an equipment for the pack. The pack has been put on hold due to lack of money.
Yeah.
Right? So there's no movement at this moment in the, in the pack. We're not going forward with that until. Um, we, we make as a, as a school district, we make a decision on how we're gonna.
So it's not, it's not, it's not apples and apples in terms of like, if we don't do the lockers, we could be the pack with different.
No, I cannot do that. It's for di- different, different parts.
Yep, I.
No, that, that's why we haven't moved at all that.
I figured as much, just checking.
Yeah, I I will send the information about that.
No, don't do extra work for me on that.
Yeah, no, we do have it.
I think, um, so for me, I just want to acknowledge, thank you for providing this. I know that this is in part what we've been asking for for a while. We've seen that in different versions or smaller versions, so thank you for putting this together. I I think I would. I want to figure out how we can be a part of the discussion in the projects that we're prioritizing, right? Because I think the reality is, is it gets really frustrating for me and I think some of this is our own doing, right? We can tend to talk in circles and things, but sometimes like. Director Larson has brought up the HVAC system and the air quality time and time and time again, since I've been on the board for the last three and a half years. And so if, if, if not here to help guide. And make some of those decisions, then then what are we doing here, right? And so I guess like, what is it going to take to, to allow us? To be a part of the conversation around how public dollars are spent? Because that is like our biggest responsibility as a school board, right? Um, and so I'm not really sure what that is going to take, whether that's a policy that we need to implement, whether that's uh just shifting our practice. And how we talk about capital projects, but. I really do want to employ us to do better and to allow, give the board more. Of the ability to have opportunity to really support the prioritization of these projects.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that acknowledgement. That would be great to have something like that in place, but um. One of the things that we do is when we go for a levy or a bond, um. At least the projects has to be approved by the board. So at this moment, we have. We have the, the projects that you guys have approved. And but when we went into the levy and then the same, also we have projects that were approved when we need the bond. So that information has already been um used uh or shared with you. Also, what maybe is also to main operation is doing also is uh going for uh. Replacing equipment that are uh affecting students. Because it's a safety issue, it's an equipment, it's out of, out of line and will be affecting the students and it will affect classroom. So our department brands, um, what we have a CapEx, it's called CapEx, it's, it's a report. And I already shared this before, maybe in, in Mr. Larson has already seen it. Would tell, tells me all the equipment that I have in this, in the school district that. Date that it will expire, that I, eh, how much it will affect the students and and if this is a primary equipment that we need. So some of that equipment is already in that list and it's also on the uh, on the reports that we prepare for. Levy and the reports that we prepare for bonds. So that's how it is.
So I am hearing you correctly though, that I think as we're discuss, starting to discuss those future. Bond and or levies is that there's more, a lot more engagement and discussion. We'll probably have to meet several or work sessions. As you talk about prioritization, what the recommendations are, uh what we're, what the listings would want to be that are.
And what was in the past, because you're saying, yes, the board was presented to the board. No, I'm on the board. It wasn't presented to me because that was happened before. So we're going off the assumption of. The board in the past, right? So the current board still needs to be made aware of.
Yeah.
Where the dollars were allocated for and for what reason, if it was there, you know, wanted to be there, that would be super helpful. And then things change.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, so what was important to the board maybe six years ago when it happened, it may not be important to our student needs anymore. And so we may have to change those. And so I think we just need to have a discussion around or an opportunity to make sure that the money that we have. Is prioritized correctly, just.
And I think just to kind of reiterate and and add, like, not just to priorities change as they should, right? Uh, but also like, when things get more expensive, the money gets tighter, right? And so then we have to, even within our longest of priorities that gets passed to the levy, we still have to prioritize those projects. Based on the funding that we actually have and the the cost of those things. And so, yes, we can have that list that gets passed. And then the conversation shouldn't stop there, just when it gets passed at the board level, right? We should still continue to engage in those conversations to say, you know what, we're actually running low on our money to be able to finish the pack. What does that mean now? Should we still go ahead and buy this sound equipment to get installed when we know we can't finish it? Or should we prioritize something else, right? So I think it's just, it's, it's how do we collectively? Um, and again, I think this is so important because these are our local taxpayer dollars and who has to answer to our taxpayers? It's us, right? So when things aren't done in a way that, and I know like the early learning center, right? That was a huge one, right? Um, I wasn't here for that, but I heard about it when I got here, right? Because the community was still very upset about it, right? Um, and so, you know, uh, you know, and I think there's so many things that go into that, but all that to say, I, I, you know, I just want to make sure that. You know, we, we are brought into the conversation more frequently, um, so that one, we can speak to the decisions that are being made. And we have the opportunity to provide input. It doesn't just feel like we're going in circles, saying, we need to focus on this, we need to focus on this, we need to focus on this. And nothing really seems to happen and we continue to have that conversation.
So I want to clarify and make sure I heard what you all just said. So if there's nothing left in the bond then.
I don't believe so. I think we spent a lot, but I'll just do a switch on that.
Okay, so then, uh, and but the bond plan was, in terms of the sound system was. Was paid, uh, bought a new soundboard and the, the, the.
Headphones.
Headphone, the mics, the mics.
Right, but that was done during, I just wanted to, it was, this was not done just recently, this was that. A while ago. So when we were going through the project on that, and then the design and that development of the project, so that was done at that time.
Okay, and so now we're looking at, I don't know, I gotta do a quick check, but they, is there a soundboard? Okay, okay. Just asking the tech person to make sure.
There is a soundboard.
And does it work?
Yes.
And you use it?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So then the question becomes, to really upgrade the sound system to a, you know, a better level. We're talking speakers and electrical work, which um, you're, you're kind of saying, well, you can't use levy dollars for that. And I'm saying, why not?
So again, it goes back to what was the list of projects that went to the voters.
For.
For the levy.
There are no lists of projects that go to those voters for levies. It's just, it's a day language about operations, blah, 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 blah. There's no list of, no list of projects.
So usually in the background, there's a list of projects that helps.
So, so I personally.
My, okay, so I'm, I'm speaking from my experience in different districts. What we have done is we have developed plans. As far as what we're going to do, will spend those dollars, much like you're talking about prioritizing whatever needs, what are we going to spend the dollars? Then it gets translated into more of a, I guess, mobile. So that you do have a little bit of wiggle room as you're working through these projects to be able to shift into things a little bit differently.
Right.
But still meeting the, the definitions of what we went to the voters for.
So I, I, I testify, I was city council invited, public in, we went over everything before that levy went out. Couple times ago, not this last time, there's a full list. And we were deciding between replacing locker pipes or drinking fountains. It was that. Every time we change it, the first step that we're gonna end up.
Right.
Picking them up or taxes would change right before our eyes. They never did that before that time and they were doing that as an admin. I assume they went back to doing it as an admin. It's a laborious process. Most of the citizens that were there were terribly thrilled, like lost over eyes. Fog index is pretty high, um, but we pounded through it, did a quite, well, we were part of it. It's like a greater appreciation for why you have to leave certain things behind, why you don't. Some of those include mandates. And some of those include deadlines for uses of money and some of them include how you can use them.
Right.
But no, the last levy we just did that we extended, we didn't show them any kind of a list, it probably was still working off the old list. And the construction budgets completely depend on all of that, right? We were tech levies and and staffing levies. But um, for my good, I just want to be cautious here. I, everybody likes looking at these lists. And everybody, you know, I, you can name one or two projects, maybe a Dave or, you know, Carly, if somebody wants done in a whole list. And I, I don't know that we should spend six months of Sundays trying to go over this stuff. I think lists like this could be provided to us. I think we could go over them and come to some pretty quick questions on items that we think should be addressed and you can respond to them. You either insert them or you have a response that says we can't insert them, so we can move on. Boy, I could, I could see us really getting bogged down. And micromanaging people who are professional, making good decisions. What I want to do is catch them in the act of succeeding. So I don't mind reviewing it or doing the homework, but I think it's homework. And then you come back and say, hey, where's my, where's the project I keep talking about for air quality? Where's the project that does the baseball field or, you know, where we're gonna sponsor and not pay for that, you know, scoreboard? Whatever the thing is that we think's important or I don't want to move forward on these uh, you know, locker rooms yet, because I don't know what kind of design you have in mind. Those are good inputs, but I bet if we had twenty or more, I'd be shocked. And this, this is probably a list of hundreds. And so I just don't want to get over micromanaging and spend hours and hours of our time second guessing our professionals. When most of the time they're right. And I'd just like to say, why don't you just name what we need to get in there and see how soon we can get them in on that priority? Because that, you're right, Carly, we, we hear it from people going to these concerts and things.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I, I want to acknowledge that, like, the intention of my comment was in no way to undermine, right? The, the work that you do and your expertise or to micromanage. And I think that we don't talk enough.
Yes.
About the projects. And so it was, how do we have, and so, and this probably why this feels so hard, or I don't know if it feels hard for you, I'm not sure what you're feeling right now, but. Because it tends to be when you get in the seat, we haven't talked about it much. And so then it's like, ah, here's all our stuff, right, that we're thinking. Um, and so that's all, it's about how do we, how do we elevate the conversation to have a more robust conversation more regularly? So that we can be informed and offer those inputs when needed and and then give it to you all who are the professionals. So agree, uh, yeah.
So the first thing I'll say is, most of these are done.
Yeah.
So I just put in a stretchy, eliminated all the ones that were done.
Yeah.
And there's like twenty five.
Yeah, so I have.
So that's the number, that's the number that, I mean, I agree, we should be kind of looking at on a fairly regular basis. To see if the ones that, you know, and and the fact that I don't see the, the, you know, the sound system upgrade. Anywhere, um, that's, that's good concern for me. I mean, some of these other ones, I mean, some of these like. Two hundred, three thousand dollars for a switchboard. I don't even know what the switchboard is. I mean, at Foster? What does that mean? The power.
For the power, for the. I didn't hear, but also we need to think about talking about, I said, the turf and the stadium. Um, that's already, so.
But I mean, to the point, I think we should be reviewing the, you know, the actives at least once a year.
Yeah, and I think, so back to our earlier comment, we may, you know, we have a presentation, but I think we need a work session. Because A, there's a lot of levy conversation, but this conversation has come up pretty regularly around project planning. And creating really the vision, right, for the work. Um, I think that if we are going to go out for levy, I think. We have to refill that once anyway. Back to what we were talking about with that early learning center, so especially around capital projects. And so I don't know what happened in the past, but I know that we probably need to dig in a little bit more and really be clear where we want to go.
Well, you're, you're probably talking on two different levies. I mean, there's. We're not, you know, what, what we potentially what Burke was about to do is go out for an E P N O levy, not the capital. I mean, the capital projects levy, we, it is what it is and we're, we're working through that list for the next, until twenty twenty eight.
And I, like I said, it's two conversations, it's not one. So I think we have to have a couple. I think we do need to make sure we have an annual work session just.
Yes.
Um, levies and whatever the topic is, but I think we need to add it in.
And the specific priorities, prioritization of the capital projects that are coming out of the levy, you know. And the specific, the priorities, prioritization of the capital projects that are coming out of the levy, you know, year after year after year. And, and some of them, you know, as I mentioned, are gonna be, you know, required. I mean, we don't have a choice for some safety reasons, but then there's a bunch of one that I think, like this locker room. That was my complaint about this, I mean, if you just throw the locker room one on the, on the agenda without any context to it. That's what was driving me a little bit nuts. Is that the most important? We heard from our students, eh, it could wait a year. And so, you know, and there, and there's various, I'm sure you have various reasons, you know, why you may or may not wanna do that.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's the conversation and then put it in, in with all the other ones that we have and then come up with a, a priority list.
Well, okay. I agree, a, a hundred percent and just, and just not to dwell too much longer, but going back to your switchboard comment at Foster. If we're getting solar panels, doesn't that have to go directly into?
No, solar panels at Foster.
They're not at Foster?
No.
Okay, I misunderstood then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just that show Walter and Togo.
Showalter and Togo, okay, because then, cause we're gonna have to upgrade our switchboard, we're gonna need solar panels to get in there. So it's kinda like, I just wanna make sure, got it, perfect. Absolutely, thanks.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So I guess we are still gonna, I'm, I mean, I'm not sure that if we're gonna get to the, the, so we have a decision point about doing the locker rooms this year. I'm not, I mean, I'm not convinced that we wanna do that this year. Yet, I mean, I could be convinced if I have had a little more, you know, context of all the other options and we're putting it ahead of this one, this one, this one.
Yeah, one of the reasons we did, um, um, did, um, it's because of safety issue, the lockers are becoming a safety issue. And, um, gave, and gave, gave a, an attest for that. Um, we're talking about the team fifties, uh, lockers, uh, what we have in place, and they are breaking. They are broken and then they kind of have to possibly reach the students. So, and then we included also showalter in the school that because we have a problem with, um. Uh, um, asbestos. We have completed, uh, we have completed a testing of our, of all of our schools last year. And showalter's locker rooms had asbestos in it. So we will include in the replacements of the, um, the locker rooms and include also the asbestos removal in that particular, in the locker, in the locker. So, uh, you have a picture of why we have asbestos too. And then, and the unfortunate water is becoming a little bit more stressful because the, uh, toilet seats and the, the urinals that the students are using. They are from nineteen fifties, uh, so, um, as, because we was not remodeling, uh, was not remodeling when we did, within, uh, when the, the upgrade here. So it's becoming a, a safety issue for the students when they're injured. So that was, was placed on before.
Okay, so that context was missing from, from the video that I saw here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I thought it was just the Foster lockers that needed to be ordered and I think we missed that date, was my understanding. And then we already missed that date. So we were talking about Foster, not talking about showalter, this is different. Was this showalter? Cause I hadn't heard the asbestos abatement being part of that program or the design. I just heard lockers.
Yeah. It was part of, I, I'm not sure if we, we sticked that.
I, I think the, yeah, and I think that's kind of what brought up, so the curiosity, like definitely, it, yeah. Asbestos was not mentioned last, the, our last meeting. It was literally just replacement of the lockers. Um, well, actually it was a remodel. But then the emphasis was put on the lockers, particularly according to getting them ordered, which is where the urgency around approving the action came. Um, and it's clear that while lockers is the primary issue, um, there are other things that are being done as well. Um, and yeah, that wasn't asked.
So I think you mentioned, um, asbestos in the showalter, although it was not, it was like one line and that one's gonna be like the headline. You know, replacing asbestos, that.
We actually, uh, we actually add a testament, every six months we have to go in and test the allocation to see that we have any volatiles and in the air that has been disturbed. Uh, so we would really, we like to remove that, so we don't have to, uh, if any, anyone can go and, and, um, touch it. Then, you know, we'll have a different problem. Um, but we have, um, I'm not sure if we had, if you're going to showalter and look at the urinals area where they are. We, I believe that we did test this area. We don't know if we got tests that has or are behind the, those ones. So those ones are also compounds, uh, that could have, because we didn't touch it, we didn't scratch it for testing, we actually don't know. But those are tiles that have been there for a long time. Um, in, in the first time, the nineteen fifty six, um, maybe, so.
Okay.
Doesn't, that was the intention of why it was put up in that, in the top.
So you're, you're testing every six months, which is great. Who's testing?
I am testing.
So your, our staff is testing?
Yes, so, uh, we did original testing and then we took, uh, classes, um, on my custodians maintenance. And I am the designated, um, person, so I took more classes than others in order to know how to test, what to test.
Yep, yep, okay.
Okay, I'd still like to see, you know, uh, I mean, that sounds good, like, that's given enough information to vote for that, but I'd still like to, um. Not too distant future, kind of review these twenty five or whatever that are on the list for the capital levy and, and throw in a couple of those other ones. You know, the, the speakers and sound system and whatever other ones that are floating out there that we might wanna consider.
We have a work session.
Yeah, yeah.
And it has to be annually, I feel for sure, if not by.
Yeah, I don't want to give them more time for me to prepare and have all that. I can give you a whole list of everything you need to, to, um. So, and moving then.
Yep.
I wish was, uh, yeah. I guess we do have that. We do have also the wish list. Uh, principals right now, they like a lot of a bait, a bait detector in their bathrooms. Um, I'm researching that, but I don't think that we have the funds to do. Uh, there are just things that principals would like to have in, in their schools. They don't even come to the list, uh, because it's just process.
Uh, the more a timing question, um, is there a particular time in the year where that would make one be for preferred, but ignore and then make the most sense?
Well, since a lot of these projects, I think, need to get done in the summer because, you know, you want to show the students right there. I would say backing up from that, you know, like, you know, the end of the year or the.
Yeah, I'm, I, I will suggest, uh, October, November, uh, so we need to get.
Get all the things you have to do.
Yeah, be between the projects, get an architect as needed, or get, um, all that information.
Order long.
Done.
Contractor, so October, November, that would be a good time to do. I don't know if anyone would be ready with numbers too as well. You, are you familiar with that?
Sure.
With that.
Season one, just.
Yeah, but we, you have some, have idea about doing bomb projects or something like that?
We can talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's down the road yet.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to get it added to the, the calendar here.
I know we have a lot to do tonight, but I wanted to, to acknowledge that last slide, that you've had F T D cuts, that you guys have had to adjust and make do. Um, are you hanging in there?
Yes, we are hanging there. I, uh, we're hanging there. I don't know about my, my staff. Uh, they, um, what I'm trying to be very, very positive and promote that positivity to them. Um, complaints are coming from, complaints from the lack of staff coming from everywhere. I mean, it's not just that. Um, um, the lack of cleaning, cleaning the rugs that we have produces other, other items too as well. Uh, so we have, because we're not vacuuming every day, we're not vacuuming, like we did used to do the classrooms every single day. We're doing it actively once a week because we know how the, the power. Uh, and then also the lack of, uh, subs that we have. Um, it's kinda, it's very interesting because people would like to do subbing, but it costs me at least, uh, eight hours of training. To train a, a person to be a custodian. And then the first thing that they say, oh no, I cannot do the work. Because you have to carry about part of you for, I would say, hours. Uh, so it's physical too as well. So the lack of having sub in place, it gets to, right now, my, uh, my staff are working a lot. They're doing a lot of work in extra hours. Um, they have, um, they do have support, but through the principals, we're trying to collaborate, collaborate a lot. So for example, I'm asking, do not do parties in your classroom because we're not there every single day. Do a party because now end of the year, we're doing, you know, all that. Do it in, in a staff lounge, do it in a place that we are cleaning every day.
Yeah.
Right? Because if we don't clean every day, then you have pests coming in, into the classroom. So now we're spending more money, you put that too as well and try to control that. Uh, so it, it's a series of other, other things that come through, but being positive and trying to make sure that my staff members are positive. And trying to do the best they can. And that's all I can ask from them.
When we love rent space, does the amount that we charge cover enough to, to cover the staff that takes to do it?
Uh, so with the facility rent on this, uh, the cent, the custodians have to do that work. It's in their union contract. Um, sometimes if I don't have volunteers, because there is a volunteer request. Uh, I have, we are blessed that we have probably three or four, uh, people that like the overtime, the facility overtime. So on that part, I'm pretty good, but when they can't, it's really hard to try to get, uh, people, uh, to do the, the facility. Uh, facility rental, that part, so. And, and I understand that we have to rent to get some revenue, right? So it's kinda becomes like a, you know, we do need to do this, but at the same time, I have a tired, a tired, eh, group of people. That I have to sometimes handle, have the volunteers, I have to force them to do the work for the C V contract. So it is a, it's a double sword.
So on this page, I'm also interested in that vandalism, especially at restaurants. So are there any, uh, investing, that's one that you can list the students to help with?
We actually, one of the problems that we're having in the restrooms is that we already had some, I already had some conversations, especially with the high school and the middle school.
Yeah.
Um, we have installed cameras that are close by that exit door, so we can, sometimes they can pinpoint, um. Who the students are, who the group of students, the students are, but, um, we do have a lot of losses, a lot of. We are replacing a lot of urinals, some toilet seats, we're replacing toilet paper, uh, um, hand towels, dispensers. So, um, that does the, that's the amount of work that we're, we're doing all the time. So conversations are already, that Foster, Foster High School had, has a planning phase, but it still cannot control a hundred percent. Uh, they are, they have teachers outside on the hall with student recess. Um, so they're controlled by the, by the security guard, but, but there's not that.
Yeah, ultimately, ultimately that one requires everybody to be, including those students. And that could be an issue for a student advisory discussion because if we're spending, if we have to spend money on all this stuff. And we don't have a bit for stuff that we should be spending on, you know, uh, for the students. So, I mean, and yeah, there's no way that adult is gonna be looking every place at all times.
They can't.
But the students are, you know, really as a collective.
As a collective.
They are everywhere.
How you saw is true. Yeah, that would be great. I mean, and then, eh, support, support from one student, you are the, you are the leaders there. And then educate your other, uh, students, fellows, uh, your scholars to, and then how to take pride of your school. I mean, we build, eh, the term school, we should build that school for you, um, to have the best experience. And that's our goal as a, at the department to, for you to have a, a place where you can study and you can succeed in life. And that's what we're trying to provide to you. So it's a little frustrating what we have. So if you speak for us and speak to your peers, that would be awesome.
But I'm interested, need, need a little education program to make sure that, I'm not sure that you guys, I mean, I know some running start students aren't probably there that much. And make sure that you understand what the issue is here and so.
So like, what is about the vast, back then, was the history at all time, it's, it's just in the bathroom.
Yeah.
It's absurd. Yeah, eh, eh, I, it, it's, I'm going from bathroom to bathroom, they're locked because they're letting their down. And then it's, then I, I go from door to door, it's like a horror movie. You go, oh God, this one's locked, you run down the hall, but next one, it's still locked. You finally find when you walk in, like relief, and then you go in and there's like five people vaping and you're like. What, what is this hell? I mean, hell.
Yeah.
So that's gonna require a, they just hire a community.
Yeah, we will, we will require a lot, a lot, help from everyone, we can do it.
Um, can we get a copy of this? Or frankly, it sounded like you had one.
Um, I did send it through the agenda questions, underboard questions.
Thank you. It's there, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Some more to go. Um, all right, next is our early learning and walk kids reports.
Thank you.
There are some questions asked, you've responded to, what additional questions you've had?
I guess you kind of, originally you were saying, so the, the walk is, you know, there's five, six domains, six domains. And, um, traditionally year after year, after year, our kids are lowest in math, which says, okay. We'll be getting some efforts in our early, early learning program to maybe, or, you know, address that particular issue. Um, and it's, yeah, the, the black students are, are, in there as well, um, year, year after year. So, so, um, yeah, that's, I mean, this gives us some, some information about where we should focus maybe in, in early learning. Cause it's been like that for years. The other question I, you know, there was, so you had a, there was a downturn in basically the, everybody this last, in twenty four, twenty five. And, you know, the walkage for those who may not be familiar with it, is not, is not a chemistry fill in bubbles. So it's a kindergarten teacher actually doing some evaluations, some of it subjective as I understand it, I've done myself. And so I'm wondering if, you know, we had a kind of a tough start to this year and also in kindergarten, I mean, a lot of. And this is done usually at the beginning of the kindergarten year, where we may have teachers that aren't necessarily, you know, uh, experienced with this particular stuff. I'm just wondering if a good chunk of that down could be attributed to just the fact that, you know, teachers that weren't necessarily experienced providing, you know, doing that analysis, we're giving it. I wonder how much of it is that?
I think it's a great, um, question. It's a very big possibility that had something to do with it. Because like you mentioned, it's significant downturn. There's gonna be some, um, concrete reasons why that is.
So that's kind of my interpretation of that. And that's, it's, it'll be good, hopefully next year will be more, more stable with these sort of things up, but, um. And then that test, that hypothesis will be tested.
Right.
Um, you know, I don't know if anybody's looking at, I mean, this math issue has been around years. Yeah, you know, I don't let the kids, I mean, at that age, kids, we're talking about this counting, you know, that kind of level. And so whether there's, you know, anybody's looked at it or that anybody's ever looked at that, I mean, we have some really good, um. At least they're rated highly, uh, early learning programs, like they're casting you, but, um, yeah, I don't know. Is anybody doing any, looking at that at all?
Well, one thing with this, um, assessment is like you mentioned, it is given at the very beginning of the school year. So it really assesses what you, their children come to us ready to do versus what, how well have we talked about. It doesn't measure instruction because that hasn't really occurred yet. But certainly it says that I think folks who are well trained and experienced in how to administer, they will look at, can more reliably on the data.
Does this, sorry, if it's in here, do we have? Sorry, my brain, um, do we know how many of these students had access to early learning? Like who are enrolled in a preschool versus weren't? And then, cause that's probably gonna, has to impact it al- also, right?
We could pull that before, but like.
Okay. I just think that'd be interesting, the data analysis, right? So if, it's not sure that I need it, but are you thinking about that, right? Because if fifty percent of our students this year compared to last year did not attend preschool, that's gonna impact the numbers too, right? Um, so again, just like, that's what the data analysis conversations, I hope are like, right? Looking at all the different factors and then being like, okay, we see the consistency in, okay, it's fifty percent every year, so now it's something else, right? And then now let's look at it, um, cause I can imagine, um, you know, with a lot of newcomer families, right? They may not have attended preschool, um, certainly, certainly not one of ours, potentially.
And there are community, there's been community programs over the years that involve, um, volunteers coming into homes and. And there are community, there's been community programs over the years that involve, um, volunteers coming into homes and working with parents. And, you know, we don't, in this, this, we tend not to spend probably enough time talking about early learning, and it's such a foundational thing. That, um, you know, it's, 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 we need to pay attention to it, because it's the starting of everything. And there are ways to, to deal with it. Um, and not all of them necessarily involve the district spending a lot of money.
Well, like we shared, I mean, shifts were shifting to from a half-day model to a full-day model, right? Is, is significant.
Yeah, 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 that's part of it, yeah.
I think that'd be interesting data to look at, is to see the students.
And I don't know where the, we've lost, there used to be, um, uh, King County, something, had some programs that were proven to be very effective in working with families. Uh, and I don't, I lost track of where they went, but anyway, thank you.
And with, um, we'll, looking at street data, in addition to whether the children attended preschool, we'd wanna just dig in to find out what other factors might not be, um, uh, going to raise that easily, but also could be impacting the students' readiness for kindergarten, in addition to that.
So what is, what is, I'm still stuck on eight, where we have an increase from the years nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, that's coming out of COVID, so steeping blind, right? And then something happened, like some bizarre echo in twenty-two, twenty-three, where everybody kind of went down. Then there's another peak in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then twenty-four, twenty-five, another this year, a downturn. And I'm looking at this, and go, these are kind of, they're coming to school, and it's really only a measure of what their family, their, uh, communities of faith, what their experience from, maybe watching Sesame Street, their brothers and sisters, whatever their exposure is, that's where they are, including. And then learning for some of them, so, but what did it tell us? Just where we have to start? Because it's not like it's gonna change how we're coming to school.
Right, so this tells us where to begin. Where are they, where are they at of what's considered proficiency levels as a senior kindergarten? And where are they not? Now, it's teachers, you know, group and decide, determine which kids need what to get caught up, so they are on track.
Like, so interesting, cause I guess that's an important, important thing to think about, but same, I was like, we're talking about kindergartners, like, yeah. Catch up, you know? It's just such an interesting way of looking at it. I think what it tells, tells me is like, or, or what we could maybe implement a little bit is like, if there are additional things to again, enhance what early learning supports we need to offer as a district, that, that could be a thing, otherwise. I think it's a test that we just have to do, right?
Folks, they're, they were describing to me, just for other reasons, we had some nearly open one, they were describing the post-COVID kids literally having been interacting. And so they have, they have tantrums, but they don't have to express the fact that they wanted this, not that. Instead of asking for it, they just have a conviction that, and there's a whole lot of other things. So what they do, try to not penalize them, but put them in a timeout, so they kind of get, get control themselves and things get better from there. These kids have been traumatized, and then thrown into a bunch of kids have never been socialized and expect them to do well. So I see that from the nineteen-twenty year. And I, I don't understand why they did so well in twenty-one, twenty-two, in terms of new kids coming to the school. I'm just trying to remember if we had a big infusion in twenty-two, twenty-three of many new migrants and refugees that came into the area. And we have a population explosion of five-year-olds that just still were resolutely struggling from what they didn't learn during COVID. Do you have any kind of speculations on this stuff? And I guess in the end, it's all about you deciding, well, we're low in math and we're low in language, so we'll focus on that part, which is class.
I think, I just kind of say one thing, though, I think the most important part about this test is it's the classroom teacher that actually has the student that is doing the assessing. And then they are making classroom-based decisions and services and supports based on this data. So we're giving you the big profile of the entire district.
Gotcha.
But this test, and there's not a lot of tests like these, um, uh, you know, PONIS and PONELs are tests, other tests out there, where it's actually this, this teacher and student write together, doing a assessment. Now, this teacher has a whole profile of, of, of information to support that student's learning. Right? And they also have it for the classroom too. So I think that's the most important part is, we, we, um, we, as an institution, take the kids as they come. So if they live in a tent, if the, I, I've seen the tents when they've been raining on them. If they don't, eh, if they have a very, you know, supportive family in, in the tent or not, or if they're maybe even in an abusive situation, that, we take the students as they come to us. We use this data to make big decisions in terms of how we provide services, but really, the magic happens in the classroom. It really does.
Absolutely. And part of our looking into, you know, talking with principals and teachers, some things that you have called out on slide seven, we see, for example, Thorndike, although the percentages are low, they've been fairly flat across a period of time. Whereas like, Taquilla is overall comparatively high, but there's been a great volatility of percentages over the years. So that's what I would like to find out from this new teachers, what do they see as possible reasons for that?
Thank you. All right, this is the technology update. Thank you for.
Thanks for being here, Lee.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Your typical thing.
Do this as long. Well, additional questions to upset? I should have a general question about AI. Have we, we don't, we don't have an AI policy. Yeah, is that right?
We don't have an AI policy.
We have guidance.
But we have guidance, yeah.
I would like to see us get an AI policy passed, um, drafted and passed at some point, um, before we get. I mean, we're already integrating it, um, but I think, uh, I think we need to put a policy around it. Um, to be really clear about, like, when and how, and in what ways AI can be utilized, both by teachers and by students. Um, yeah, so that's just, that's a hope, that we can kind of do that soon, um, since it is already starting to be.
Are there model policies bubbling through some associations?
Yeah, there are some of them, some of, one of the reasons why we did not, I know we had a conversation around this last year, is because, um, some of the recommendation has been because AI is changing so much, so fast, so quickly, that they said it would be best, some, so it's not either or, some have had an AI policy, there's some districts, I have copies of them. Others have said, no, keep it more general under, um, technology policy, right? To, because we have, um, and student use of, of technology, um, to keep it under that frame and under the larger umbrella of, um, digital, sort of, digitals and those sort of things. But I, I hear you, but we decided last year, because there was still so much, I mean, you didn't, you didn't take that approach. It's definitely something we can consider.
So I think for me, one of the things, you know, when, um, we know now about the impact of technology on the developing brain. Uh, we know now about just the impact on mental health. Um, and, you know, talking about technology broadly, but also like cell phones and these other things. And, you know, uh, uh, the reality is, is like, there was a big experiment, right? Around technology that was done on our young people, um, us too. But, um, and, and these technologies that were invented and kind of just like let loose, right? Um, and now we see the harm that it has caused to ourselves and to our young people. And so I think for me, I, I hear that, yes, AI is ever-evolving, and that terrifies me, right? The fact that it's a fully unregulated thing, right? And it's probably not gonna be regulated, because we've seen how they've regulated or not regulated other things. And so part of me wants to say, do we wanna gamble? Or instead, do we put some things in place recognizing that it's a policy that then can be reviewed? When things change, but I, I, you know, I mean, I'm really, I'm really nervous as a parent who's gonna be sending my kid to school in the next two years, how AI is being integrated in the classrooms. And I don't want this to be another situation where we fully embrace a, a technology that is ever-changing, that we actually don't understand, and the people that are developing it don't actually understand, right? And then twenty years from now, we look back and we said, dang, we really should have thought about that differently and structured things a different way. So again, how can we develop a policy that allows for shifts and change in the future? What is really clear about, we're not gonna gamble on our kids, right? Um, and, and do things that we have no idea what that impact is gonna be.
Yep. So I wanna uphold that, but I also wanna compare the adult world with what's going on. I work at K- King County IT. Uh, we have no idea what our policies are, we're just shaping them ourselves, because the industry is moving very fast. Number one is security, making sure that they're not diving in, pulling a bunch of our information out of our kids, out of our humans, out of our sources. We're a public agency, but there's just stuff that shouldn't be grabbing and like, oh, right? So if you're working on certain things, the contract, I'm gonna go to chat, GPT to help you polish your presentation, because it's got information that isn't baked yet. We really don't wanna have it outside to kind of figure that policy-wise inside. And then companies, just literally have company confidential and secret items in it, wow. And defense companies even more important, right? So they're still trying to figure that part out, but there's also, like, just as basic things like training, where we're making videos all the time, and we're having the narrator be an AI narrator. They're far better than anything we can hire, they're more consistent, they never get tired, every time they change the script, and it's a really important skill to have in the workplace, that I hope people coming out of high school will have the skills in, right? So figuring out what amount of AI that they can use, eh, use for, you know, applying into careers. I don't want them to be the last place Charlie's, right? That's what I used to say when I was a kid. Just because they didn't get the training on how to do some of this stuff. So I wanna have a guarded approach, I want them to be protected, I also, you know, think that, you know, why you have math teachers that didn't let me use calculators back in the day, because it's considered cheating. You know, and now you just do it on your phone or whatever, they don't care how to get there, as long as it gets to the end. They're actually more excited about three or four of you coming together to solve a problem, because that's teaming and engineering at its highest form. And how do you signal like that? So I'm sorry, I just spoke quickly and threw a bunch of stuff out there. But I just wanna say, before we get all treated like it's a cell phone thing, um, yeah, I don't wanna read any of Aiden's presentations that was written by chat, see, GPT, cause I know that's not him, right? But I know the work that I spend all the time putting together statutory courts that are oriented, I get bored of them. So I throw them into chat, GPT, just to get the different flavor out, but I also change it, so it sounds like me. Cause anybody that can read a resume, it looks like it's built by AI. I feel like there are reports coming in right now. Teachers and others know that it was built by AI, it's not the first out of the person, right? Um, so we need to leave space for it to be a tool, and not have it exploit, exploit any vulnerability on our youth, and also have our youth have powerful employment skills when they come out. That's the one thing I wanna protect.
So I'm interested from the students, how many, how are you guys using it? Which particular tools? Should we say this? I mean, we know everybody's using it. And this is not a, you know, a gotcha test, because every student is using it, that's a given.
Yeah.
So it's just the question of, you know, to help us figure out, you know, what are the, um, and I, the legal education motors did an interesting webinar on, so they had a bunch of students from around the area talking about how they were using. And there's plenty of good ways to use it. So I'm just kind of interested in what's, which, where you guys are on it.
Um, probably one of the odd ones out here, but I don't, I don't use it for schoolwork. I use it for a very niche, uh, use, which is D and D. I use it, I use it, I use it to help make characters for D and D, that, and sometimes images, and that is the only use. I, I ethically reject it, I morally reject it, I think it's not a good thing.
Okay.
So.
Um, okay, I'm not part of that niche group like me either. I use AI when I have to, like, um, for example, for like an English essay or something, and I can't think of a specific idea. Sometimes I ask it to help me like brainstorm ideas, like, and I try to find ones that are, like, I try to narrow it down. I don't like just choose like the broad subject, and I also make it more, um, detailed when I ask it for a question. Like, I think it's more, um, I guess more personalized when you're more specific with it. And sometimes if I don't have anyone to help me, I'll just ask like for a homework answer, for like math or something.
See, that's, that's a, that's a way that I think is as smart, and a lot of people do it that way, uh, to kind of help them, you know, get ideas, and they don't write the paper with it, but it, it helps them to evaluate and get different ideas, which is, I think, a great use of it.
Yeah, I agree. I use, I use it to like brainstorm a lot, and also I use it, like, since you have to pay for grammar, I just like copy and paste my essay. Like, this fixed grammar and this and stuff like that. And something that I also use it for, which really helped, what was like, the last speaking math classes, to like make practice problems with me, and I copy and paste my teacher's lectures into there. And I also use it like a lot to like write emails sometimes. But like a while ago, when chat GPT wasn't done or something, I tried to email them, I didn't really know how to write, cause I didn't know it too much. So then I kind of took a step back from that, which I think is very important, like, students, like, when they're using it from everything, and it takes away from like basic creativity, so, um, we have to be aware of that for that, but overall, that's what I've been using.
Yeah, I think that, that's one, it's interesting, using it for tests, that's one I heard, some several students mentioned of that. It's cause it, it generates some, some questions for you to test yourself on it, you know, or, and a math problem is, is another typical one. You know, was explained well or something, please explain this, this math thing to me, and it, it, you know, great.
Yeah, one, oh, I, I thought of an academic, I actually used it for, I gave it a rubric in my assignment and told it to bring it, cause I wanted to see what it thought I would miss.
Uh, I, I think ultimately, I, I agree that AI can be a great tool. And I would never suggest that we are an AI-free district, right? I think that's not re- reality. Um, I, I think that we need to be really responsible. I think another thing that's interesting about technology is that young people are gonna figure it out, it is intuitive, right? I have a two-year-old who doesn't get screen time, but he can still pick up my phone, and he can navigate it, which is nuts to me. Because he doesn't, I don't just give it to him, right? So I, I say to say a little bit, like, yes, we need to provide opportunities that prepare our young people, and some of these things are just, it's, it's the world in which they are growing up in, right? And so you can probably pick up the technology thing and navigate it much more easily than any one of us. Um, and so I think it's, it's a yes-in, but I think for me, we, a, a policy is at least, at least a way that we can pretend to try and be responsible stewards of this, uh, very unknown technology that I think ten years from now really could get out of hand, and a lot of people are gonna be rolling back things arou- around it. Um, so I know, Dr. Cruz, you've added that to your list. Great, any other questions about technology?
I guess we should probably ask this. This is, this is probably more relevant to teaching and learning, but, and, and you may not know the answer to this, but, um, I see calling AI, that's a, a product that's came out of the University of Washington, and a lot of people are, are using it. And I'm just wondering, that along with others, are teachers actually using it to, to do things like generate lessons or create papers? Or do we have any clue about how widespread? I mean, is this like two or three teachers in the entire district, or do we know? I mean, there's, I guess, you have, there's somewhat of a list there, it's worked up of approved, I mean, that doesn't seem like the, you know, giving away private data, you know, those kind of principles that we have, but, I mean, do you have any sense for?
So from my, uh, conversation with Darren, because he's the main
Yeah.
post between tech and the school. He, his reply is there's not too, too many teachers actually using it. And now user, and especially if they're using it for teaching, that's very few teachers using it. Uh, right now, the approval or something like that, we are all look at the applications, uh, privacy, student privacy, how they protect them. So that's basically how we look at it, so we want to allow this, because some of them, they just said for, for uh, people eighteen or older, we definitely can't do that. But we can, actually, as a school, we can approve it, because we can, you know, approve for the, for the parent. Or God, because we think this teacher is going to be there to monitor use. So teacher will need to be able to do that, uh, but if teacher doesn't wanna take the responsibility. So teacher will need to be able to do that. Uh, but if teacher doesn't want to take the responsibility, we will not prove it. So. Uh, so like take, uh, Google for example, they're a lead behind compared to Microsoft. They now have that season in the Google habit and they have, uh, approved for staff adult. They have approved for high school age and then approved for middle age or under. So right now we are only approved for staff. Because there's no ask from school. We, we really need the school to try that. Then we are tapped, don't teach. If they say, oh, we really need it, then we can discuss with them and then, and see, uh, if this is proper or that one is appropriate. Uh, like this one, uh, the, the Yoda, that's a, they have a fund, funding to make this project. The fund is going away next year. We do not know if they are able to let you have it free. So there's things like this. So. It's, it's here. It may not be here tomorrow, but it's, it's not free, but are we going to pay for it? And but we, we have Google, that's what we already have. Do we want to use that one there? Everybody's trying to send email, say, you want this, you want that? Uh, I think this is like the skill developing and I think we need a, a more conversation between school and teacher and us. So we can decide this together.
I'm glad you, it was really interesting to, to change the subject for the, the laptops that were giving out to these students. Uh, which have the high speed internet at their house and that kind of stuff. So that's the, so I'm interested in the assessment on that. That was roll out of the big deal and I've never been clear on whether it's really helping students or not. And so, but you know, hundred fifty three deployments. So students are taking it, hopefully it'll show you something helpful for them, but I guess we'll find out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, I just, I appreciate, you know, you guys and the, the keeping our network safe and all that. I mean, I don't think most people appreciate the amount of work that goes into. Um, keeping our network safe and, and the URA funding and managing all that and all that. Um. And we, you know, knock on wood, we haven't had a high line, uh, situation and, and, um. I guess I do wanna encourage everybody, I think, I think any board members, so you need to get your, uh. Laptops upgraded to for Windows eleven, which makes things more secure and you can, you know, make a, an appointment with, um. Wanny, I guess, and yeah, it's really helpful. So the nice thing is you get a bigger screen when you do it with a new laptop. So. Because the old ones, I don't think they, they aren't, they aren't, uh, don't have enough memory to, or don't have enough CPU, the correct CPU to be able to support Windows eleven. So, and they're trying to get everybody before, but August, the end of August, something like that.
Well, they said it, but we'll try not to talk about that.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you, you want us to contact you if we wanna get Windows eleven?
Yeah, actually not. The old laptop cannot update. We're not updating Windows seven, so we have to swap it out like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. So going back to your originals, what you just said, and I don't wanna take away from what you're talking about. Cause I think sometimes when we say at some point, it never happens, right? So I think what we need to do is I think next year, we need to set a time where we have an AI discussion with our teachers. Some students and some, you know, community members and board members and talk about what's AI look like currently. Maybe get a pulse on how it's being used currently, if, I don't know, and whatever ethic that is, and then how we're gonna go forward with it. Cause I, I kind of just breeze through our, our policy and then. What I would say kind of caught me is just the loss of creativity. There has to be something put in there, you know, like in our policy. Making sure that we don't have that loss. So just, I think next year, nothing now, but I think we need to schedule a time for us. As a school that should just at least have a conversation and then understand what is being used. Is this you done? AI being used? Is it worth keeping? Are we gonna wanna pay for it? I don't know. Yeah, excuse me. So.
Okay, I'm gonna have it on my list of things to do. I will share, um, we're working on the cell phone policy. Now to hopefully be in place for the fall.
Perfect.
And then, um, and then I'll put this on the agenda and then Erin, you and I and Ben can talk through what that looks like moving forward. That timeline, period timeline.
So my concern about the lab, when we heard our students are using it, they're gonna be way ahead of us. And the concern, I'm not concerned about these set of students. I'm concerned about the students who may not understand it well enough and have. You know, may start abusing things about it. Those are the ones that we need to kind of make sure that we have. Um, and if the student, if the teachers are hardly, are afraid of it, that's a disconnect that's a problem. Cause the students will go forward. I guarantee it. They should.
Well, and the other thing I will say, which I wanna make sure to balance, and it's back to what Kate said. Cause when we go to, and the student, these students here can speak to that because they're listed at the Gates Education Roundtable. You guys know that the future of jobs, right, are in the stamped AI all over the field as well. So we also need to balance protecting our students, but also, uh, giving them opportunities, right? To be some of these, some of the designers of, of the future of how, um, the field looks. So it's a balance. It's a balance.
It, it's an opportunity for you guys as a group for next year, not only for AI and help us kind of shape the policy and what you guys use it for, right? That's an important thing, but I also don't wanna take away from the civic duty of even the bathrooms. So the, the group that you guys are, are involved in should carry both of those as being important, right? So we're doing the restroom, making sure that that's not running around from restroom to restroom. As a, as a kid, but also doing the AI, so you're gonna get both stuff. So I kind of challenge you guys to. Think about taking on a couple of these bigger things and see what, what you can do in your student body. Would be great.
So in summary, advocate not to use AI to destroy the bathrooms.
Thanks.
Don't do dick talks for that.
Um, this is a thirty four twenty, so and your little saying says the upgrades are possible. Okay, so the reason I'm asking is because I'm in a big organization and they call us. So you don't have like some kind of way where we do all the freshmen, all the teachers, do you have, or do you have certain rollouts?
We are.
You'd like us to get into?
Features.
Yeah.
Because we try to do arrange something with them before they head home for the summer.
Right.
Because if we would like to, so for those teacher, because some teacher wanna keep their laptop, they say they are proud of it. But then we, we would like them to get them their laptop update before they be for the summer. If they are, not every teacher is going to take their laptop with them. So those who say they can send it back to the service center and when they come back in the fall, then we'll have one, uh, already updated.
And I'm, I'm gonna try to fit between when they all take theirs for the summer and if those dormant.
You can always just send an email or any, yeah.
Okay. And you see it plugged in and you're gonna update it or?
You can do that yourself if you.
Pretty much, but I'm comfortable. I do and I don't. So I know, I know this is school property. I don't wanna be messing around on it like an admin.
No.
I'm happy to do it and work. Yeah. We'll work together on it. Okay. So I'll wait till after school's out and the ones we take at home have flooded you. I just don't want to hit peak period.
Any additional questions, comments? Thank you very much. All right. Next is the athletics update. More additional questions, comments about to go to.
It's always a great year, obviously, for me to do this year. But for me, actually, the more, um, interesting thing I noticed is the, the steady increase in participation. That's the really, you know, really great news is that more students are, I mean, that's one of the big. For me, the big thing recovering from COVID is getting students involved, whether it's athletics and drama and arts and, you know, so that's. That's hopefully that will, that will continue on because that's, um, really good. Um. The other, uh, I guess the only other question I have was, I'm just kind of interested in the. You know, also the rent, the revenue that we're getting from the facilities. I mean, since we have, you know, these nice new athletic facilities. I'm glad to see that the revenue is increasing as we're going through and, and you said the last time the, it was breached or updated in two thousand and eighteen. I'm just wondering, do you think it's time to, you know, do a little review of that, maybe buckle up a bit?
Definitely. It's, it's definitely past due.
Okay.
Um, it's been shoot seven years.
Yeah.
The, the verbiage and everything on the, uh, facility rental fee schedule is, um, prior to, um, doing all the renovations and stuff. We still have brass fields and stuff.
Yeah, right.
And a bunch of stuff that we don't rent out and also rates have, you know, increased over, um, so it's definitely time to catch up.
Yes. Okay, good. And I, cause I noticed just walking by, it seems like the, the gyms are used just all.
Okay.
I mean, you're doing a really great job. I hope, I don't know, I don't know. Well, yeah, they're doing a good job of renting the fields a little less. I don't know.
Yeah, the fields, honestly, we would rent those out a lot more if we had lights there. If we had lights.
Okay.
Those fields would probably be packed all throughout the year.
Yeah.
Um, that's kind of a hard one, especially.
Right.
During the winter time when we don't have very much light. Um, right now, we have to rent them out, uh, a lot, um, while we still have a lot of layout, um, throughout the summer. Yeah. Yeah. It's a good point. So what's making the point of lighting? Do you have anything of what the cost would be and then the offset? If we rented it, you know what I mean? Can you give us a comparison? Not to say it now, but it'd be interesting to see what that. Cost would be versus the revenues could bring, be brought in for it so that maybe it can offset it out.
Yeah.
Very helpful. Yeah, I can work with, uh, Liliana on that and gathering that information. Um, yeah, cause we turn away a, a lot of people that are trying to, um, rent out the baseball field and softball field. So. Um, I think that'd be very helpful and beneficial.
Yeah, in fact, all, with all that is of course parking.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I guess, I noticed there's, yeah, there's, there's weekends. If there's something going on at the pack, there's something going on in the gyms and something going on in the pool.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I work with the pool a lot, trying to kind of coordinate what events they're having. And kind of what we're having, um, at the schools. Um, it's kind of a lot to try to make sure not. We can have events depending on, you know, what events they are. Um. You know, multiple events, either in the pack and the gyms or, you know, kind of spreading it out down here at shore. There it helps a lot. So. Uh, trying to just kind of be mindful of that, um, cause parking definitely is a, is a huge thing, kind of. Uh, it can get out of hand if we have too many events going on at once. Have you been brought in the conversation? Cause we're talking with the pool now about it. Have you been brought into the kind of the conversation of the pool and what's going on? Are you kind of aware of the parking and what they're asking us as far as some of the lease and some of the requirements? And, and I guess on top of that is, are you gonna be required? Who's gonna be in charge of that? Is he? Is our athletic director gonna be in charge? Cause he's already working with the pool of scheduling those. They're asked for some, for some pretty specific dates and different things.
Yeah, we actually, the past has been through, um, Gabe, and I would say we actually, um, have a meeting scheduled to talk about the legal pieces of that. So, um, I know I've talked to Gabe about it, but he hasn't been part of the typical meetings with the pool. Uh, it's mostly been Amy and I, but. Um, we're actually are brought in our conversation with all the parties involved, at least from the Tefola School District impact pieces. So we can do that for sure.
Yeah, would. That would be good. And I, I also wanted to comment about the participation going up in athletics, which tells me that students, student athletes. So that means that they're getting their grades to be able to participate, which means they're in school and they're in class. And so it's, that's just a, a great thing that you're doing and appreciate in all the different things that are offered. I think you're doing a good job. Yeah, and we will officially have girls' volleyball next year. So we're, we're excited about that and. Uh, we're actually the last school in Kinko that, um, should win the league, but we got it passed and we're excited to kind of offer that next year. Super.
So I got a, a comment and a question.
Mm-hmm.
The comment is right about this time of year and it'll only be good for like one more year.
Yeah.
Uh, they start coming out of season ticket holders for renewing next year for Sea Wolves. So right now, when they're stressed out the most, about to get to playoffs if they win next week.
Yeah.
This, yeah, in June third or second. Um, and then they'll be in the playoffs about to go, right? Then they're pretty stressed out until they're eliminated or win.
Yeah.
Um, right about that time, you guys are wrapping up school, going into kind of a hiatus and I can never quite sync up when you get started again. But I'd like to, this is the time where I have leverage in those little, those, those season ticket talks.
Yeah.
To get some Sea Wolves over to your wisdom Wednesday. I mean, Wednesday is for the football team.
Yeah.
And right about the time I get them to say yes, which is right about the time school slows and it's hard to get hold of you guys because it's summer. So we gotta like in the next week, kind of hook up all this, want you guys talking to them directly.
Yeah.
So I can just step back and you guys get that figured out for you, but these guys are really inspiring people.
Yeah.
With really similar backgrounds and some of them testify that, and we gave them this fun plot pride, et cetera. To do what they do on a great level and they're professionals and they were on the wrong path before they ran into the athletics. And so they, they had great testimony for, I think, our students on excellence and, you know. Keeping things right and, and, and staying with athletics in good school, et cetera.
For sure.
So that's the comment. So help me, either after this email me or something. We just gotta hook up and get phone numbers that work for the two of you.
Yeah, yeah. The football program, um, once they start off, she's Murkiahs and, um, Dr. Pedro, she's attending and, uh, for. It's called Wind of Wisdom Wednesdays and, um, usually Monday through Thursday, football team shows up at the school six AM in the morning.
Six, eight AM.
Yeah.
It's amazing. And, um, now around this time, now that it's a little nicer out in the mornings, there's hours of field and. Um, every Wednesday they bring in somebody. So if anyone's ever willing to come in and speak to them, their, um. Coach Cross was always looking for, you know, new people to come inspire our kids. So, um, it, it's amazing, you know, just seeing kind of the culture shift of. You know, football is in the end of the year and you see a lot of football is always out there. Kind of just seeing kids be excited about doing those kinds of things is, it's amazing.
Okay. So we may look up on that. And then the, the only question I have from you is after reading all of this, you got a year of excellence. If there's a buildup yet at this point, you know, we don't have a money tree here, but what is important to you to improve on?
True.
I know, it's like a shotgun, I know, I know.
Yeah. Um, honestly, a lot of the stuff that we're doing, I feel like we're, we're kind of managing and kind of. You know, I, I wouldn't say that we need much, um, kind of what we're doing. It's really just the past, you know, three, four years that I've been in my position is really just about surrounding the kids with. Um, people that wanna, you know, improve this community and our, you know, student body. So. Um, I think that was like usually, you know, coaches don't get paid a lot for what they do and. You know, some clock in and clock out, but really finding those ones that wanna go the extra mile, I think has, you know, benefited, um, our athletes and our scholars. Um, so I think that's really the, the biggest thing is just kind of trying to find those people and, you know, surround them with, uh, you know, grace. So you're asking us not to make any cuts. You can maintain with what you have, but you're, you're saying that. Tell them what's happening right now is what you're asking. Basically, that's, that's, that's what I'm gonna do that.
But I think most of their, most of your revenue is coming out of ASP.
Right, for sure. Yeah. And that's, that's been kind of a huge stressor that I've put on teams and coaches, um, over the past couple of years is. You know, fundraising at times, which that's what they've been doing and it's, it's been working. I mean, our boys basketball team this year, they went to. I think this might be our first out of state tournament that we've had ever maybe in the Tefola school history. And that was all paid out of their ASP fund account, um, for all the fundraising and stuff that they've been doing and. Um, it was an amazing experience for them. So, you know, giving kids opportunities like that, um, I think, um, is great.
And just so everybody knows, the, the ASP fund are controlled by the students.
Right.
So, and they, I talked to some of them about they, they, um, I mean. They're, they're very fair in how you allocate the money. I mean, if you bring money in, then you can, so.
I just have one comment. I just want to thank you, Gabe. This, I mean, you've been really flexible with us when we, I, when we lost elementary athletics. We came up with the grab for special Olympics to bring back without games partnership within that, working to make sure that happens. We've had a unified sports in all of our schools this summer playing against, and I'll just say even Gabe's been out there having to coach. I think, I, I heard that too. And then also just the fact with, when we were working with the WIA, we had several meetings. When all of that came about and you'd meet with us. When all of that came about and you'd meet with us and talk with us and share with us and give us insight, so just thank you for your flexibility, you're willing to lean into. Really tough things that we had to do this year that have been hard and added on and. Um you always do it with a smile and a willingness like, let's get this for kids, and so just want to really say I appreciate all of that this year, you really. It's just been amazing to work with you, I just want to thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks. All right, uh next is board policy six zero two two for first review. Keep in mind, it is nine thirty one. And we have many action. So I say that to say we will review this again.
Yeah, my other question is why you had restricted? Does that really make any difference?
Well, it does, because if you don't include restricted, it just means more that we have to calculate, um if you pull that out, uh so. Those districts have a total fund balance as their calculation, and so I just. Uh was trying to be mindful of that.
Okay, I just want to make sure this, this is gonna be consistent with what we get on our financial resource.
Anything else?
I have no questions.
The good news about this is we reviewed several iterations of this very proposal that I'm bringing forth, so.
Nothing from me.
Great, thanks. All right. Now moving on to our action items, uh so starting with uh ten A, we will do human resources staff report. Uh any questions, comments? All in favor of approval?
Yeah.
All right, uh next is the approval of the thought exchange services. And I do have um our thought exchange representative online if there's questions specifically. That need to be answered, whether you get a motion first.
Second.
And then questions, comments?
So. I don't know, my my question, the first question was, what does it cost for the C E E's survey? Doesn't get.
Yes, I didn't, that's me, that was on me, I was supposed to put that in there, I didn't. Um okay, let me, well, I'll get to that. No, I didn't tell you what that amount was, what we pay, so I'll just say two things, one, we've paid um a larger amount. In the previous years, because we've had the long version of the survey, so so we really truncated it down this year. Um to just a very uh specific amount and only one portion to get twenty five questions, to get it down to twenty five. But I'll pull it up really quick, I meant to include it, so that I can just forward you all the proposals, but um. Let me pull it up, I don't know why I forgot that, that's a long date. And meantime, are there other questions?
Yeah, the other, the other big question, so apparently. Um I was just trying to get a feel for this product and how widely it's used and. Um so apparently Highline's used it for a few years, and I'm just curious what their. Experience with it.
Yeah, and I wrote on that that I actually have talked to Ivan about it, he hasn't given me specific about all the ways that they used it, but when I went to. I went to a couple sessions to meet with them, there's so many uses that we could be thinking about. They use it for portrait of a graduate, uh input, community input, levy planning input, like there was this long list. Of items in the head, and what I was curious about is it, so the language piece is one piece. The thing that I really, and I I think Shay can talk about this better than I can, but the thing that I was impressed with, so for example, um. If they ask the students, for example, are you, uh uh it actually goes deeper into deeper questions, so AI generators, you know. Um but for example, if this, instead of just asking a question like, does anyone call you a name, for example, or is anyone bullied you, for example? Or do you feel safe at school, whatever the question is, the students would just say yes or no, right? Um in the past survey, but in this survey, what'll happen is if the student says yes, it'll actually ask a follow-up question. So please give an example of where this happens, or please get, so it'll go a little deeper on the question, so we can ask fewer questions. But go deeper on the questions, um it won't reveal the student's name, so the principal cannot just say, oh, I know that a student. This one student feels this way, but it does give the principal more data, for example. So if they find out that the majority of these issues are happening in the hallway or in the bathroom, for example, those kinds of things. Then it gives them more information, just instead of saying, yes, I was bullied and no, I wasn't. It actually gives you more deeper, it can do it more deeper, so I'm more was more interested in that information from a personal, uh from a. Thinking about the principal perspective on that, because if I did a survey and I just find out, yes, like twenty five percent of my kids reported being bullied in my.
You still have to do a lot.
Like, you have to take a little bigger, but like, so where is that happening? Is it happening in class? Is it happening in the halls? Is it happening during lunchtime? Or what's actually happening? Is it evilism? Is it, you know, what is what is happening? So. That's what was intriguing to me about from, I was thinking from the lens of our principals and our school teams. What do they really wanna know so that they can sort of identify problems of practice or actually celebrations in their schools?
So when I looked online, there was some uh output from Highline. And so all the questions were like the the same kind of one to five questions, which, so that's what I wanted to. Understand that is this, that is this program, you know, process free-form text?
Yeah.
And how does it do that? Is it just doing?
Yeah, and I don't.
Word uh word frequencies, or is it something more sophisticated than that and? Um yeah, it is.
And the amount of proposal we had from last year, we didn't change anything, it was fourteen thousand for one year, it was fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy six.
So I just a quick comment, firstly, you described as an AI as a wizard.
Yeah, thank you.
And but it's, it's really important, because it does dig deeper in the areas that you get good responses. We don't have these exact questions, but they actually do employee surveys where I work and they're similar to all of this, this is. I can't tell all these questions are being his, because it's gonna be exhausting to me if I had to fill it out, which leads me to, and I sure like to get true input. That it's, it's can be a very healthy survey, but it's one more darn thing you're gonna fill out, so. What what are your immediate thoughts on this? Have you looked at this? I don't know, in the middle of files, I'm doing ten thousand other things.
And this would replace the CEU survey, not at.
Yeah, it wouldn't be an additional survey, it's replacing it. Um Shay, I just want to make sure I get to um also the question too, with Shay's online, so.
Okay.
Yep. Can you answer the question about the, I wanna go back to the Highline, the five-point response, can you give additional information to the team about that? And then we'll give the next of the students.
Sorry, were you looking for clarification on like the Likert scale or?
Especially how is the text processed? Uh so like if they, if they say yes to they've been bullied and then asked for a specific example, will they write text in there? How is that then generated?
Yeah. So it's a, it's a like, so on our Likert scale questions, if they rate, for example, disagree or strong strongly disagree. Then the AI is gonna populate in the next box, and it's gonna ask them. Um just to dive a little bit deeper, so then they put their reasoning behind it and.
So like when we, uh go ahead.
Yeah, so so what is the the tool, so you get, you have a whole bunch of these free-form texts. Uh the students have put in or families, and it's, is it student families and staff, right, we're giving all three of them, is that right? Okay, um what's, what kind of analysis is coming back? Is it just giving you, you know, a big stream of text, here's the stuff they said, good luck? Or is it summarizing?
No, it's summarizing it. Yeah, no, it's summarizing it all for you, so you will, if you if you wanted to, you could go through each question, you could go through each response. You're also gonna get a full summary of everything on that, so you don't have to go through it yourself, you can ask advisor. Uh to any question you want, and you can also get the common ground, we call it, so it's. Column A, what half of the participants felt, what the other half felt, and then the middle ground between the two, there's. Um a plethora of real-time data that you get as the survey is going on, and then as you close it out.
Okay, so it's gonna take all that free-form text and it's gonna do some summarization of that into.
Yeah.
Something like that, depending on, and you can ask it different questions like the, like the checkout or easy AI tools, whatever question you ask, it will.
Yeah.
Do that.
Correct, correct, yeah.
So one example, I'll just give an example of a pulse survey, which is what I was intrigued by, so that's, for example, if we. Ask one question to the student group, let's say, let's say the student advisory has a question about social emotional learning or. Has a question about safety, they could come up with a question, right, one question, we could submit it for the pulse survey, right? And then students can generate, so what is your thinking around this? And then students can um input what their thinking is, and then that answer, actually, they can become even part of the surveys to be rated. So that happened, for example, we used the thought exchange when the Watson group was um at seeking superintendent input. On the next executive director, so I had to look at the survey, fill in like what's one attribute. I wanted for that next position, and then everyone that submitted attributes, I had to rate those ten attributes based on, or twelve, however many there were. Based on what um I felt my values were, and then that's how they came up with the top priorities, so that could be done for budget. That could be done, there it just has a little more flexibility in terms of how we can uh generate prioritization lists. Uh seeking input from like, like asking a parent group, you know, for example, the question. So how is communication been this year compared to the previous year, or what would you like more in communication from you? And you could ask one or two questions and then it generate, so there's different ways we can use the survey, we do have some flexibility with this contract. To to pilot some of the pulse surveys, but that has a back to a request you had previously. Um but also we want a standard survey that we can be predictable for fall and spring. And the thing for me that's most important is our parents who speak Spanish or Teguanyia or Amaru. Or um any other language, Chinese, they can actually fill it out too, for that, that wasn't something that we always were really sure of, of the responses. From our parents and our newcomers students, right, so um that was some of the reasons why I've been deciding to switch platforms for this year and. See how it goes.
So is this all formulated in the budget as we?
Yeah, this is what, the we're, we're gonna start small, we're gonna start with the survey and then some, a few pulse questions, but. Um I know we, um if we decide, I think if we decide to do a little bigger, like do a portrait of a graduate, for example, or do. A budget or levy conversation, I think we would, if that's something that the board, I don't think we can do too much, because our parents don't want to get over-surveyed in their community. But I think if we have a project a year, I'm sure we could adjust and reform like, Shay, do you have anything to add? I hope I captured correctly, at least my experience.
Yeah, no, you're doing, you're doing, uh great, that's awesome, the one thing I would add is just. As you're, as you mentioned, doing kind of like the, you know, a fall survey or spring survey, um you can always. Compare the data between the two to see how the tones have changed or the moods have changed within the same. Surveys that you've run throughout the year, I would just add that to there.
So in keeping with our AI policy about privacy, how how do we ensure that this data, where is this data residing? Is it residing in the cloud somewhere, or is it residing?
Yeah, no. No, this is a, we're a closed system, so nothing is stored, nothing is retained, once the contract ends, everything is wiped. Um we, it's not a, it's not an L L M, it's not learning on itself, it's not pulling anything. From your student data, we're completely C S D P A compliant and um we have student data privacy compliance. Um but basically, when you're talking to the AI advisor, you can upload some parameters within it, like here's my strategic plan. Or here's the goal of this survey, and it will pull from that, but it will never pull from. Um information, it's not learning off itself, it's not training itself on your district, it's completely closed.
So, I don't wanna push, but time is moving along, is there, I'm, I I know that I'm supportive of this, I'm just wondering if you have.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, I mean, do you guys, is this good with our data security?
Yeah, and we work, we work with, you know, um like Seattle Public Schools, Highline, like you mentioned, there's. Many school districts that we've had to sign some data privacy agreements as well with, and we've a hundred percent been fully compliant, so if that is an issue, I'm happy to. To work with you on any of the compliance that we might have to share.
Okay, there's privacy is important, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think there's a a data sharing reason, even the issues, and that's not going to through the tech department.
Okay.
So here, I'm gonna call a question.
I would love it, but if I say it that way, you have to.
Okay, um feeling okay to move forward with that?
I guess if I'm taking, if I'm, people being assured that data privacy is not gonna be an issue.
Yeah, I I mean, again, we work with some of the, you know, largest school districts, I mean, we have LAUSD as one of our clients, and as you can imagine. Every school district has some very strict student data privacy agreements, and we have always been a hundred percent compliant, so I can assure you. That we're, we're very secure there.
I feel more comfortable, I heard from IT person rather than from Highline, you just got hacked in a big way, but.
So the votes tonight to move ahead of the contract negotiation, and how about we um then um. Work on the data sharing agreement, and then we can work on something and maybe um have Shanyu be involved in some of the. Execution, just making sure that there's no issues, if that's okay with you, Shanyu, okay?
Okay.
Um so we're not gonna.
No, we're.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I'm, I'm gonna, I have to say, and security case, I I feel bad as a board here. If we're insinuating that that system was the reason for their vulnerability, or they just made careful. Cause they have a product and a name, and um I don't wanna say that it happened one way or another. At Highline, because it could be completely separate systems, yes.
Uh okay, so all in favor of approval of the thought exchange service contract?
Bye.
All right.
Bye.
All right, thank you so much, um next is the approval of the N W R D C membership renewal.
Salute.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Can you break down just the, just real quick the cost? So the student only fifteen fifty-six, like, is that first student or just?
Yes, we're putting two F O and it's first student.
Okay.
Um this is a, an agreement we've had for many, many years, uh it's, it's kind of a, a two-for-one. So we're paying not only for the software, but we're also paying for the additional support that we receive, um. If we didn't have that, we would have to hire a much larger tech team um to support this. Um or any other financial product that we have, so.
Okay, so if we didn't have, so you're saying the balance, the, the cost of this outweighs if we don't have it. Because it would cost us more in staffing?
Uh both staffing and probably the software costs itself, um. There's other systems out there that some of the districts are using, uh that they're significantly more cost, um I mean. And I think it would be something that would be completely workkill for uh district or size.
Okay. I'm gonna release a new platform.
Yes.
This year.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, all in favor of approval? All right. Uh next is the cool of the out-of-state travel for the avid uh show up the middle school.
Salute.
Second, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to just comment, so the biggest cost, I think, for average is sending people to summer. Which just this, this cost of them not providing the Seattle Institute probably tripled our cost, I don't know, maybe more than that. Of that, which is unfortunate, but okay.
And we had to limit, actually, there was a request to send more.
Yeah.
But because of work funding conditions, we we settled on this number, so just FYI. It was a lot of discussions.
All in favor?
Bye.
All right. Um next is the approval of out-of-state travel for Kira.
So.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of approval?
All right.
All right, next is approval of the out-of-state travel for the National Freshman Success Institute. Any motion?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval?
Hi.
All right. Uh next is uh approval of resolution nine six two, approval of the contract for show up for middle school locker room improvement project.
Salute, second.
Questions, comments? Questions, comments?
Dispersed makes a difference.
I do appreciate the additional context that was offered. I think, um, and again, I know we just a little bit certain not to belabor it anymore, but, um, the more context we can provide. Originally at the gate, that the better that would help us go to make the decision. And I think particularly for me, I know my hangup was around. We're doing three months or adjustments, are we thinking about inclusion and belonging? And it's clearly right, y'all talked about it. And, and that was addressed here. It's just how am I going to know, right? If it's not mentioned beforehand. So I feel better, um, about it. This evening. All right, so all in favor of approval? All right, uh, next is the approval of resolution nine six three, which is the approval of the contract, the foster high school locker room improvement. All in favor? All right, um, and then last is the approval of policies.
Two, um, second.
I don't think we need to read all the policy numbers. So any questions or comments about any of these?
I think we discussed these last number.
All right, um, all in favor of approval? All right, um, now we have our two for a public comment and I'm getting a motion that he has changed his mind. On public comment, all good. Hey, is there any additional public comment?
Perfect.
So my name is Brandon Eastman. I'm representing the chair in the committee tonight. Yeah, I just kind of want to, a few different topics that we had spent a lot of time talking about that come up tonight. I just want to really sort of. Bolster what has been set up here. It's kind of spooky almost, some of the same conversations that we've had for months, uh. One of them is we just put together a very short survey and our, we met with, uh, Ms. Burdo, which was awesome. She helped us kind of figure out some ways of getting that out. We just submitted it recently to the district to send that out. So it's the same thing. It's all about communication. Um, we have a couple of projects hopefully for next year. And so we want to be able to have a way of also communicating effectively with. Parents in the district, um, as well as getting a feedback for how we better represent their interests as the parent advisory committee. So. Um, that's the first thing. So if there is information, what would be nice, I guess, is. Cause that was all, we didn't know anything about the new survey and stuff like that. But if there was a way for us to get. Some of that information somehow so we can also utilize some of that to better reach other parents in the district, that would be super great. Um, secondly, we also have spent a lot of time talking about different environmental factors that came up here, the lead, the air quality. Specifically about C D, um, so we've also really loved to see some movements on that style. The asbestos thing hasn't come up, but it got brought up here. I'm sure it's going to get brought up. So any of those things are. Just kind of this constant conversation amongst parents throughout the district. So any movement we could get. Um, to kind of resolve some of those things. And the last thing is, uh. I would love to be, have the parent advisory committee be involved with maybe, um. And to some extent, the NAI policy. I know other districts have used. Parent advisory committees when they've set up cell phone policies and stuff. And I know that you guys had that one kind of already. Hammered out, so that's, that's all good, but, um, the AI policy seems like something that parents would have. A lot of them that, that they'd like to get. So I just kind of want to put it out there. Those kind of things, we, we would love to be. Sort of reach out to or.
Yeah, it's great.
That makes sense.
Anything like that, so.
Thank you. Uh, actually, I think the someone policy is, is done. Like it's, it's in process. So can, can there, can we open up an opportunity?
Yeah, we're actually just planning out a little bit of getting some information to the student advisory. So we can do the same thing with the parent advisory.
That, right.
And so we're just beginning to draft something. We're hoping that we have something between August and September to implement for next year, but. We're just, we're just still in the process.
And I think that, you know, the parent advisory is fairly new, right? It's new stages, right? Several years old. And, and so figuring out how we can continue to strengthen the collaboration. I mean, for the point, you know, I, I see the parent advisory is a huge benefit, right, to the work that we're doing, right? And so how can we. Really leverage the voices that are in that space and the folks that are willing to give their time, um, to be a part of that. So the more we can do that, the.
I would say, and always so, uh, the, the past, maybe this is something to talk about, something I would love. I'm usually don't talk at public comment, but.
Yeah.
I know I've always wanted to be part, more part of the parent advisory and my understanding was that we, I get invited when you guys want me there. But I'm just letting you know that if you guys want me there every month, I'm happy to come. So I just wanted you to know that. So if you want me there every month, I don't know if I can come every month, depending on what else is going on, but. I am happy, me or my team, happy to come every month to talk about any topic you want.
So we've always had, I mean, I've always felt like the board and you are super responsible total stuff that we. Brought up to you in the past and.
So just, just put that up there to the team about how you want to.
Yeah.
Have me more involved.
Dr. Pedrosa, just curious, did we just said we're going to have some share and we'll include them, but.
No, I.
Ballpark quarter of the year when they might get engaged, so they have set expectations. It's not.
So I actually have, so I have a meeting to talk through the cell phone timeline. Uh, we were. My goal was to have something in place by the summer in front of the board. So if they have a meeting this summer, we have to get to the student advisory sooner though, because they are actually leaving. Parents don't tend to leave. We tend to stay in the summer and just be. So, uh, and the board and we as well. So the students have like kick a walk, go to college, go to chains. We're here, we're here. Uh, I just don't mean as a mom, I'm stay patienting all the time. So I think, um. That, so we want, want to do it before June, but I think we can do it at the same time. Cause what I think, uh. We can actually send it to them like in a format, a draft format. There's things we can do. So my goal is to have something, my goal is to have something in place with some input. I also want to have our principals look at it as well. So. We're hoping we can get some engagement in June and then bring it from the board to discuss. And then if we need more time, so that's my hope is that by Ju- uh, August, that the board can actually then, uh, have something in place. Luckily, there's a lot of great cell phone policies and procedures around. Um, and I've heard from the students. Very clearly that there's something in the middle, right? It's not just like a total ban. Um, and I, we have so many students that have family members from other countries, this and that. I just think, I think we need to find the middle ground around what that looks like. So, um, that's what we're working on. So. I guarantee it's going to be helping me on that, um, getting that initiated by June to get some, at least get some feedback from the students at that level.
I see sleepy eyes. Um, okay, so, uh, if I could get a motion to adjourn, no way, just kidding.
It's just about the last thing, but I got it in the file letter already.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, all right, so you're getting a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, everybody.